Everybody ready? Good evening and welcome to the July 24th, 2025 meeting, 2025 meeting of the LBUSD Board of Education. Open session is called to order at 6:04. This is our first meeting with our new superintendent, Dr. Glass, and we're very happy to have him here and hope you will all welcome him warmly. All all public comments submitted online were sent to all the board members prior to the meeting. If you are a student and wish to speak, please put "student" on your card so that we can call you first and you don't have to be here for the whole meeting. Let's see. Mr. Whitcock, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It's on the board.
You can do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I knew you could do it. Okay. Report on closed session action. The board took action to readmit student 2024-25-001 by a vote of 5 to 0. All members voting yes. Now, we are going to go to public comment for items not on the agenda but within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board. We welcome your presence and your input. To ensure a respectful and productive meeting, we ask that there be no clapping, no booing, or other disruptions during the comments or board deliberations. If there is a disruption, the first disruption, I will say something and give a reminder. The second disruption would be a formal warning and the third disruption, we will have to have a recess and removal. So just to let everybody know what's going on. Let's start with our public comments. Clerk Hills, are there any speaker cards for those wishing to comment on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter of the board? Okay. Superintendent Dr. Glass, do you have a report for us?
I do. Thank you, Madam President. Well, good evening. Thank you, trustees and Madam President. As I begin my report tonight, I want to share a few reflections and updates from my first month in this role. We are still very early in that journey and I've been deeply engaged in listening, learning, and laying the groundwork for meaningful progress together. Since officially starting, I've prioritized meetings with you, our board members, district leaders, staff, families, and community partners. I've had one-on-one meetings with each trustee, including meetings with you this week to better understand your individual perspectives and your hopes for the district. I've also spent time with our communications team, HR, administrative services, learning services, financial services, and all the elements related to those, just understanding the team and the district. And I've begun outreach to our principals, local partners, including the Laguna Art Museum with President Perry, the City and Police Department that I'll report on a little later, and the Boys and Girls Club. In addition, I've had individual meetings with parents, students, staff, and community members. These conversations have been candid, informative, and in many cases, inspiring. I've shared, I've heard a shared pride in Laguna Beach schools in what this organization represents and an acknowledgement of times that we've fallen short, but most importantly, a collective desire to constructively move forward for the future of our children and this community. As you know, I have a 100-day entry plan, or maybe 90-day entry plan, that focuses on three things: listening, assessing, and building trust. And I've already begun community walkthroughs and listening sessions, informal coffee chats. And I told Trustee Morgan that I would be very caffeinated in all those and that is happening in those meetings. With several sessions for families and staff scheduled over the next few weeks and Victoria has been very supportive in making sure that that schedule stays full. I've also been reviewing past survey data, board goals, our strategic frameworks to ensure alignment as we plan our next steps. This early work was recently featured in coverage in the Laguna Beach Independent and the LA Times Daily Pilot. These stories highlighted our focus on transparency, innovation, and responsiveness to community needs and those are values that I am committed to upholding. As part of that commitment, I want to acknowledge something else I've heard clearly that our community wants us to do better, not just in outcomes but in how we treat each other. So tonight, I'm asking for all of us, board members, staff members, and the public to recommit to respectful engagement. That includes not interrupting one another during meetings, speaking only when recognized by the president, and showing our respect and restraint as we work through challenging issues that face our schools and our broader community. These expectations are grounded in our district policies, but more importantly, they reflect the kind of thing that we want to show our kids that we can do. We want to be a model for our students. We won't always agree and that's okay. If we're doing meaningful work, we're going to encounter issues where there's no single right answer. We may have some those tonight. We'll instead have a set of tough choices and that's life. It's natural that there are different values and perspectives and those will surface. What matters most is how we engage with those issues. How we lead in this room sends a message to the kind of district and the kind of community we want to be. In the months ahead, I'll continue to meet with the staff and stakeholder groups reviewing data and operations, preparing for a more formal set of entry findings to share with the board this fall. I've already begun collecting a list of ideas to bring to you. Yep, coming back to school events will also give me a great opportunity to spend meaningful time with the staff, the parents, students, and more time with each of you. I'll be working closely with President Perry and the full board to support your work as a governing team and we're working on that already. Thinking ahead to the key issues that face the district and how I can support this board making a positive lasting impact with your time on the board. Finally, I want to thank you again for the incredible opportunity to be here and serve and for welcoming my family into this community. Sorry. For the warm and genuine support that I've received from you and so many here. It means a lot. I am honored to be in this role and I'm optimistic about the work that we have ahead. I'm committed to keeping Laguna Beach the excellent school district that I know you all love. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the bargaining units. CSEA, THESA, would you have a report?
Thank you, President Perry. Good night. Good evening. We had a wonderful first meeting with Dr. Glass and CSEA is really looking forward to collaborating with him and moving forward to the benefit of our students and staff. So we're looking forward to that. Also, I have to give, like I do every year, a big shout out to Ryan and his team. And again, I stand by that we have one of the best maintenance teams in the United States. Our guys have been working so, so hard on so many different things and I've watched them all summer and I have staff that tell me we have the most polite maintenance people. They're right there all the time. They take pride in what they do and they just deserve a big shout out. And I'll be doing brownies and lemon squares for the barbecue again for them at the end in August. We just finished summer school and classified staff have been very busy and engaged in helping with our recovery aspect and also with the LEAD program right now with 600 kids in it. We have a lot of classified staff helping and working with that and it's just been a really fun week and I know some of you will get to see it tomorrow and you'll see all the happy energy and all the arts and craft scene and learning going on and I go home every day covered in paint. So it's been fun.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcock.
Good evening, board. It feels like it's been a long time since we've been here. So not, you know, it's summer school, it's summer so there's not as much going on for us, but we did run a very successful summer school program. Once again, 100% completion at the high school on credit recovery. The majority of it direct taught as you saw last year, President Perry. And we actually added a few items in this year that we're excited that we'll share next, the next board meeting when we go through it all, but we added some avid programs in and some different things like that. So I think you'll be excited to see that. And also want to give a shout out to Ryan and the staff. There is a lot going on at the high school this year with the field and finding leaks in bathrooms and all of that and the communication and the professionalism of everybody there working with the students and working through changes on a daily basis. It just was kind of flawless. So it's wonderful working with them and being able to do that. And outside of that, we're super excited to get back to school and get started again.
Mr. Mayberry?
Well, they pretty much gave my report. So just a lot of wonderful things going on this summer in our very large, robust summer school program. As I said, we wrapped up kind of our more intervention one last week and now we're going into some enrichment one this weekend, next week. And again, I'm glad you guys are hopefully able to visit it. I can just see that how excited the families are and the students to be there. We have, we do surveys to get feedback on how we can continuously improve those. Dr. Canenberg tirelessly leads that work and we've received a lot of good feedback on the intervention one. And I think as we all know, sometimes going to do more academic-based learning in the summer is not the funnest thing you want to do in the summer, right? However, our staff works really, really hard to make it feel like it's more than just here to get some academics, additional academic support. It's fun, it's engaging, they're playing instruments. I think you guys had a Irvine Valley College advisor that was there one day. So just, it's really a continuation of the work that they're doing during their school year. So the kids are engaged but also having a chance to have fun. So great to have staff to support that in the summer and appreciate the board supporting that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Conlon?
Thank you, President Perry. Hope everyone's had a restful summer and enjoyed their getaways. It's been an eventful summer for us thus far in HR and been busy filling the remaining vacancies in preparation for the fast approaching 25, 26 school year. Our attention is also focused on finalizing the details for our upcoming Professional Development Day on August 19th. That's the same day as the Welcome Back Breakfast. And I personally enjoyed getting to know Dr. Glass over these last few weeks and being office mates and excited to welcome you and your family to Laguna Beach.
Thank you. Now, board reports. Dr. Kelly, do you have a report?
It's been a wonderful summer, I must say, having some time off. It's been really fun as far as listening to all the students in my community who keep raving on about the LEAD program and what you've been doing in that and how sad it is to end and can it be going longer. I've also been very interested in everything I'm hearing about the new superintendent. It was wonderful to see the article in the Orange County Pilot and in our own Independent. As usual, I am saddened that the school board stuff is in the back. He deserved to be on page two. Most places, that's where he would have been seen as the role that he is providing and will provide in our community. And I've also spent some time as far as with the city government and some of our council members. They're excited that we're moving forward with the pool. They're excited that in March we will be breaking grounds as far as to finish it in, I think, 11 months, hopefully. And they're really not interested in meeting anymore as far as on the planning of it, that they think that we've done a great job over all these years and the plan is a good plan. Thank you.
I don't really have much of a report. I'm also was happy to have a little bit of time in between meetings and also very happy to have my son in LEAD this week and have a schedule. And I want to do a shout out to all the people who have been working on summer school and LEAD. It's been just a terrific program and I know the kids get a lot out of it. It's a great thing our district does. I'll second and third, fourth, the shout out to the facilities team that every summer just, just so much work to get our schools back in order. And just to add my thanks to Jason for a great start to your service here. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't have much to report either. I did meet with the Art Museum Education Department, Transportation, the CCA Board Meeting, and a group called Tutor Me that was very interesting and has some possibilities. And I look forward to visiting the LEAD program tomorrow.
Thank you. So I also would like to welcome Dr. Glass to our district. We've had several meetings and it's been wonderful to be in this role with a leader that can give us guidance and perspective, whether we agree or not. We've been able to have a lot of really great dialogue over why and what the different options and decisions look like, which has really helped me because this is new for me, obviously, here, but I've been over there for a bajillion years and it's nice to have that leadership. So thank you. We also, the facilities team, the high school track is going in extremely fast. It's impressive how some construction, when you're looking at undergrounding, is everywhere and the track is like done, just like that. So it's, construction projects are different and they all have different elements to it and it's important to make sure they're done right and I applaud our team for getting that done. We've had a nice summer, a little travel, a little chasing baseball, preparing to move our last student into college. I proudly attended the TOW and El Moro 5th grade graduation, which was wonderful because we have all graduated, our kids from, or my family has all graduated from TOW and it was really nice to be at El Moro and see how that goes because I've never been to an El Moro graduation. Then I headed to the Thurston graduation and participated in that at the high school and then as well as the high school graduation, which was wonderful because all of the students that graduated are kids that my kids have grown up with and those families. And it was really special to be able to be up there and congratulate them all and see them so excited and so thrilled for what's coming. I attended the staff barbecue at the end of the year. It was great, very well organized. They had terrific raffle prizes for all of the staff. I don't know if they had enough for every single staff, but it was very exciting every time somebody won. And kudos to the team that put that together. It was great. I went to the ribbon cutting ceremony at the Boys and Girls Club for their new playground, which was spearheaded originally by our own Cotty Petri Norris, who lives here in town, but is no longer in our district because of redistricting. But she was there since it's her project she started off and that was great. I met Katrina Foley again as I had also met her at a another event that I went to and I'm completely escaping me. It's a, it's, oh, I did go to Carter's promotion. That's true, from Katrina Foley's graduation program. They have the civic organization program, which she was talking about when he was here. And they have a graduation at the end of that and so I attended that. I was the only board member, which was a little surprising, but that's okay. He was happy to see me there. And I think Jeff Dixon was there as well. And then Diane Dixon was at the Boys and Girls Club event as well. So that was really nice to see people and kind of see how they interact and model that political process. We kicked off our initial transportation committee very brief, just to decide how the conversation would go, who should be included, and how we want that to work. I think we have our first meeting coming up in August and I'm excited because that is definitely something that Aliso residents talked to me quite a bit about when I was out walking the areas out there. And I'm excited to see how we can move that forward. I attended the city council meeting where the superintendent was invited to speak and be introduced. Howard introduced him, which was lovely. And it was very nice to be there to show support for our new superintendent. I also spoke about, as a public citizen, about supporting the Irvine Bowl and music and hope that that's something that the district can tap into it, once that's something that might be an option. And then I also went last week to, or this past Tuesday, to encourage the city to consider a program that allows, that requires some kind of a pump or fire hose type system, they do exist, for any new pool that's built in the area. It's something that I recommended or asked for for our pool. So I don't know if that's in there or not. But I think that partnering with the city as part of the fire mitigation plan would be great and our pool has a ton of water as a resource and we have a big, huge hill right behind the school. And then I went to the summer school at El Moro, which I don't know if I heard about, which was wonderful. They had 5th grade, you know, kindergarten through 5th grade, students that were there and they were broken into groups and I don't want to take away the thunder of Betsy when she comes back and presents it. But it was absolutely wonderful because these kids have worked really hard all session and they had a carnival at the end of it and all of the games, they had carnival games spread out, music. They had cotton candy and everything. But all of the games were made from recycled materials. So they went out and got all the cardboard and the cups and everything and made all of the games for the students to play. So it was a great opportunity for them to see all the different ways that you can entertain yourself that isn't screen oriented, I thought, but then also that creativity that comes out of that process as well. And then I think, I think that's it. I'm going to the LEAD program tomorrow. So I've been really busy and being out there supporting our students and our kids and it's, makes me very happy. So, and rescuing a few dogs. I've got a few bruises to show that. So thank you. That's the end of my report.
Well, what I wanted to report is that the last few weeks, I've probably sent the new superintendent more memos and background papers than he ever, ever, ever wanted to receive from anybody. And what I have found is that our new superintendent is a very, very brilliant man who synthesizes and analyzes and studies rigorously, not just my stuff, but all the stuff coming his way. It's been a real pleasure getting to know you and working with you. I think the thing I would most readily say if I was asked to do a one word is honest. I just have found you to be an incredibly honest man and I think that's what we really need. And so I'm really looking forward to working with you. And I wanted to mention that in terms of activities in addition to spending some time out at El Moro events and events up here at Thurston and a couple of other things that I've really had a lot of fun and my wife has joined me in doing. We went down yesterday to Rivian and they had a really fantastic music program for toddlers. And I've got two of my grandchildren toddlers in town right now. And I took, my wife and I took them down and it was, it started out with kind of a small group and it just got bigger and bigger and more moms and more dads. And I had the pleasure of being introduced as the grandpa, only grandpa there. And, but watching these toddlers interact with each other and really get serious about the music. And these are the kids that are either in our pre-K or kindergarten, and they're also the kids that are too small to be in school yet, but they're the kids who, I guess you could say that you've been caught red-handed trying to figure out how they can be served by our pool. And so the thing about it is, it was just, it was a highlight of the week, if not the month, for me to go down to that. And the Rivian does such a fantastic job sponsoring these community events and activities. It was just a real pleasure. I also would like to say that the comments about the grounds crews and what goes on in summer really resonates with me because I don't know if I've ever mentioned it before or maybe it's, there's very few things I failed to mention before, but I was actually a member of the Classified Employees Department here in the school district and I used to mow the lawns at all the schools during the summer. And I had a chance during the end of the school year, picnic that they had in the parking lot, to spend a lot of time talking with the grounds crew people. And they were over there sort of by themselves playing the beanbag game. Well, I don't like to say that name. The point is, I spent a lot of time with them and they're just, everything that's been said here tonight is true and more that they and their families and the, you know, you see their families together. You really understand who they are and what they do. And they are like, it almost rises to the level of patriotism, the esprit de corps they have about serving this school district. And we're really blessed by having those people. The other thing that I'd like to say, I read in the newspaper that some of the union representatives made comments in the paper that one of your biggest jobs is going to be to restore trust. And, you know, I think that's interesting because I think all of us have, I don't think that's your, that's necessarily limited to you in any way. I think all of us have some work to do restoring trust because I think trust has been damaged by all of us in certain ways and there's nobody that can be sitting back and saying, you know, our trust has to be restored because we've lost our trust. The fact is, everybody has work to do restoring trust and I really liked your comments about we really got to work on that. And how people treat each other on the board is a very important part of it. You know, it's funny, I noticed Jeff Dixon is going off to Newport Mesa or whatever and because I was doing some research on how different districts deal with student representation and how they go through the process of appointing that and I was just looking through some of Newport Mesas and comparing it to San Diego's and whatnot. And one of the things I noticed, if I've got it right, Newport Mesa where Jeff is going, they have protocols for how board members are supposed to conduct themselves. And it says, not only verbal communications, but non-verbal communications should be civil and have good manners. So I thought that was kind of an interesting one. When we get into our bylaws, maybe we'll want to add that to our bylaws. So anyway, those are my comments, Madam President, and thank you for the time that you've allowed me.
Thank you, Clerk Hills. All right, let's move on to a governance item for the discussion and direction for staff regarding the revision of the MOU between LBUSD and the City of Laguna Beach regarding the School Resource Officers, SRO. And would you like me to talk about this a bit? Or do you want to?
I'm happy to introduce it or follow from you. Yeah, thank you. As you know, Madam President, we have a longstanding MOU with the city and the police force here in Laguna Beach around our SRO program. And I did have the opportunity to meet with Chief Calvert and a couple of members of his team to talk about the status of this. So I think I'd like to update you on that meeting first and what I took away from that. And then we have Michael Keller here also to talk about some of the supports that we intend to put in place across the district, really to build on the capacities that Officer Proteen created for us and a testament to the impact that she's had in that role. But just on my update with my meeting with Police Chief Calvert, he and I had a, and his team had a constructive and collegial conversation that just affirmed the strong partnership that exists between the district and the police department. We both share an interest in student safety, an interest in student safety positive relationships ongoing communication and of course Chief Calvert is uh I've just in the short time that I've been in this community know that he's he is known for that um as being a great communicator and a positive uh force in the community our discussion focused specifically on the SRO program and uh we both agreed that it has and it must remain focused on prevention inclusion and service and not on enforcement um Laguna Beach's approach and then by that I mean the district and the police force uh approach the SRO program is thoughtful and intentional I've worked in other organizations that have SRO programs they've all been wonderful and that and I would say this is a quality system that you have in partnership that we have with the with the force it's designed to support students build trust and help foster a safe and welcoming school environment and one of the one of the assets of it that the chief talked about is that as officers complete their terms uh here working as SROs they then go out into the community and they have those relationships um just on the um um on the on the 4th of July our family was out on the beach I don't remember which one it was a big surf day um but we did see um uh one of the officers Danny um Danny yeah there he is um Danny was uh riding an ATV and was mobbed by students um in a good way and um and I think that goes to show the the kind of connection and relationship and as our our students become adults and go out into the community those relationships persist um and and can help the officers uh head off um issues that may be arising or be a trusted person on the force that uh a young person can can go to Chief uh Calvert emphasized and I um want to underscore that the officer selected to undergo s the SRO program or to to become part of the SRO program uh go through significant and specialized training this includes coursework ongoing professional learning in youth mental health trauma informed care de-escalation strategies adolescent development legal parameters and school settings um cultural awareness and community-based policing practices uh it's a role that requires not just a law enforcement expertise but deep empathy and skill and a commitment to working with young people we also discussed uh Officer Crotein who currently served or currently or did serve as the district's SRO um Officer Crotein established herself as a respected visible trusted presence in all of our school campuses uh she had a thoughtful student has a thoughtful student-centered approach that exemplifies what the role can be and should be a supportive adult that builds positive relationships diffuses potential problems before they escalate and most importantly and what we want to build on serves as a connector between student staff and the resources in the community as part of my ongoing entry process I'll continue in to engage with students families um and school leaders to gather input about the SRO program and think about how we can improvement I really appreciate Chief Calvert's approach his openness to continue dialogue and collaboration and at this point I'd like to turn things over to Michael Keller to uh talk about s talk with the board some about the supports the district is putting in place to sustain and strengthen the very kind of proactive student-focused work that Officer Crotein has led in our school so with that I'll turn things over to Michael.
Thank you Dr. Glass and uh Board President Perry members of the board it's so nice to talk to you this evening uh we we have really enjoyed an incredible partnership with a school resource with the city of Laguna Beach and and developing the school resource officer program from one officer at the initial onset in 2018 to the district agreeing to partner on a second team member starting in 2019 and we have had five five current or alumni members of the of the current Laguna Beach Police Department be part of that program and that gives them really invaluable skills and relationships with young people in our community which can be really helpful I also want to honor the role that Ashley Crotein played she was an incredible partner for us she she has a unique skill set a unique approach she's wonderful and highly valued for the services that she provided in consultation with our department and across the district so she's she continues to be somebody that we want we can readily reach out to and so I just want to say that too she still makes herself available to us and then in in the unique consultation sense for for providing services for us I do also want to just talk about um our role in in selecting an officer we do participate in that process when there's a new member but the ultimate decision for staffing comes down to the Laguna Beach Police Department Command Staff and and their decisions on selecting the qualified individual for that role and then as far as how we approach sensitive issues is specifically related to females coming forward with issues around sexual sexual assaults harassment bullying lots of different areas that I think is really one of the drivers of this concern we have a full systems approach for this and I just want to talk through just again you with your support on our student support services that we provide we're able to provide a lot of really high-quality specialized supports with master's level PPS qualified team members we have nine site school counselors four school social workers four school psychologists two school counselors who are coordinators so that's a total of nineteen staff members and some of our administrators have backgrounds in psychology school counseling includes Dr. Allman at the high school I didn't know if you knew he was he has a social work degree and was a former school counselor Irene White former school psychologist Jennifer Moss former school psychologist I'm a former school counselor and school psychologist and together um of those individuals that I mentioned in terms of the direct service providers of those nineteen individuals seventeen are women and we and they're readily available to create safe options for students who seek gender-aligned care so all of our school team are trained in trauma-informed care all the all the requirements of Title IX which we have annual trainings on which are which are to address issues around sexual harassment discrimination in that area the Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting Act CANRA is a mandatory training every year and there are lots of specific elements of that from grooming behavior to partnering with law enforcement and child protective services on issues and we stand readily available and respond immediately when issues like this come up entry points for students are with parents and caregivers first and foremost we'd hope that we have close students would have close communication with their families this area in general is a highly stigmatized area lots of people do not want to report this and so we know that the foundation of reporting is is a high-quality trusting relationship and or and a de-stigmatized culture around mental health other entry points could be referrals from peers directly with a classroom teacher classified staff administrators and then the array of individuals that I just mentioned who are highly specialized and caring and receptive to supporting students in times of need and crisis. So with all that being said um we want to continue to explore different options around additional training in this area I think Ashley's a great example of somebody that has highly highly specialized training in child exploitation child sexual abuse really difficult topics and she does a lot of work in that area and I think that in addition to the regular trainings we can definitely consider additional supplemental trainings for our team members to ensure that we have a safe and trusting response process going forward and we're going to be exploring that in the coming coming weeks and and look at different options in our in our district and community for our teams and that's what I have.
Thank you Michael and uh just to close Madam President I wanted to apologize to Officer Lopez I called him by his first name and uh just want to give him the respect that he deserves and uh Officer Lopez just please know that you're uh really respected uh and valued in this community and we look forward to working with Officer York as well and with that uh Madam President we'll turn things back to you and for discussion in any direction that the board has for us.
Um may may I ask a question Dr. Keller?
Yes.
Um so Officer Ashley Crotein really got there were um students felt very comfortable coming to her.
Yep.
How how what can we do so students feel comfortable coming to the counselors and social workers?
Yes.
I mean because that hasn't happened as much.
Well I would push back on that a little bit respectfully Madam I I would say that I think that we really work to have our team members be highly visible with students that means this FaceTime one-on-one or in small groups or in large groups doing large presentations I would also share that um that that is the foundation and and non-judgmental interactions open counseling type reactions building rapport with students those are all really important for students to feel safe and comfortable so obviously first and foremost we want to do no harm with children that we serve and so we are hold ourselves to a high standard in terms of making sure that we're positive respectful open and and readily make ourselves readily available in times of need if a student's crying or visibly upset we approach them we ask them what's going on we bring them into a quiet setting we transition them so there's there's a process there that tries to help get at the root cause of what the concern is and it's not always these really serious issues that we're talking about tonight it's a lot could be peer conflict it could be a bad grade on a test it could be um trouble at home there's so many ways that we address those issues so.
From from what I understand one of the ways that our SRO really made headway with young people feeling comfortable coming to her is she was there and actually did some of the lectures in the health class on sexting date rape drugs and trafficking um she talked about the child pornography task force so when girls heard not just young women but even men heard some of these issues they then she opened herself up to you can talk to me about this so it's comfortable to talk to somebody about it um so my question is are are some of our school counselors going to take that role and be able to lecture in the health classes about some of these topics?
Can I piggyback on that?
Yeah.
Thank you for your comment um I I have a similar I don't want to say a concern but I think what happens when um one of the SROs comes in and and lectures a group of kids about sexting or trafficking there is a kind of um you know it's it's done not just as an educative moment but as an educative moment with potential legal options that are connected to it and so I think that was one of the things that made her um very effective because when kids heard her talking she was both teaching them about it but going like look you can get in a lot of trouble for this which is you it's easier to accomplish in a uniform than it is when you're the school counselor that you go to when you are upset about various other things so I would just like to suggest that we still have the SROs do that and then figure out how our female counselors can be present and participating and have a role so that we continue to do the same thing and build that kind of trust around things that are not just you need to know this but this is something you really need to know because it's you know deeply problematic and legal.
I I agree with you I and I just want to share that our students our student support specialists our licensed clinical social worker at the high school does go into health classes she does teach units on healthy boundaries up focuses a lot on mental health but a lot of the relationship pieces that can get young people into difficulty uh relational abuse topics that are that would help again de-stigmatize this build awareness with young people and then know how to what action to take to get support so they are getting FaceTime in those settings and that helps them I and I agree with you I think that we absolutely continue those conversations I think the right qualified people have to be there and 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 I'm I think that we're on the same I think we're in agreement on about that so I appreciate that.
And I I agree a lot of these um issues have happened so quickly with you know
Agreed.
AI and so on that you know we can't expect them to know how to deal with all this unless we give people some training the other part um Dr. Keller is we of course need our counselors and our social workers for ongoing help with these issues but when you're going to somebody initially it's going to be somebody that has talked about an issue and that you kind of know it's not so much going to be a counselor that you know may have one be a wonderful person but you don't really you haven't interacted with them and you don't know if they know anything about date rape.
I just I I have to again respectfully disagree I know of many cases in this school district where the entry points were not the school resource officer for sexual abuse sexual assault and they came through the the social worker primarily we have had some come through the school counselors uh it's not always a female issue also there's abuse that happens to you to males as well and when those issues come in we have a safe and supportive environment that immediately takes action and we're immediately partnering with our with the police department and child protective services in those cases so so I I don't it's not a black or white issue we're trying to have a multi-dimensional response model where we can have kids have different entry points with many caring adults in the school system obviously we want to support parents to be have great communication with their kids too and and hopefully they would be a resource in our in a traumatic situation so and and we want to empower young people to be able to support their friends because that is often when that information comes out and how they can support them with taking action.
Well an example that was given to me and I I have to give credit to Thesa for really helping out and um Michelle Foster as well as Ivy and some of the other young women but an example they gave was there was a sexting instance that involved two female students and they took it to the male SRO and he didn't investigate it thoroughly saying it was not really traceable they took it to Ashley who in contrast leveraged all of her resources and expertise and really advocated fiercely for these girls and I know if you go to somebody and they don't take you seriously then you just go within yourself and it's not solved it's you 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 know you just you just hold it and you don't keep trying and that it's it's a a family issue too because um you know I know things a lot of things that have happened here that haven't been brought out but um like for a parent of a girl who went through many of these incidents and that finally came out and the mother just felt huge guilt because she didn't know and her daughter didn't feel comfortable coming to her and it it it's like you said it's friends that you need to be able to talk to it's family too and I don't want to I want to have as many options open to our students.
I think we have the same goal obviously prevention is is a huge part of that was that would be the starting point we want to prevent any of this from happening but obviously in a world that's imperfect these situations will happen we want people to feel like in one of the hardest pieces of communication they may ever express in a really stigmatized experience and something that potentially there's a myriad of emotions that happen around that we want them to feel okay and that somebody's going to do something about it on the back end and I don't and I can't comment on that particular situation however I uh that's not our standard of care and so I just want you to know that we hold uh I hold an extremely high standard of care for our team and so in the event that we under respond or don't handle something correctly that's a that is a really important learning experience that we got to do better next time.
Well I'm really happy to hear that we are going to put more emphasis in this area now and I think that if we find some good training that um the SROs should also be invited to come.
Yeah and they do they do partner with us on many trainings and and we would be absolutely excited to have them join us in that process so thank you I appreciate it. I would like to report back to you in a in a few months and and I'll let you know the status of this.
That would be fabulous Dr. Keller thank you.
Thank you.
So if I may I'm a little confused because I thought we had questions and then public comment and then discussion I feel like we've had the whole discussion and I have a lot of questions which brings me back to the beginning of this of what is the purpose of this agenda item besides just discussing the role that the SROs have and um what our staff does etcetera I I was under the impression that we were discussing if we were looking to bring in a new a third SRO are we not are we what is the purpose of this item because I have a lot of questions related to the the SROs under the impression that we were talking about do we are we looking to add or I don't know so um I'm looking for a little bit more background on the.
I think we're we were looking to change the MOU and we're still looking to maybe change the MOU.
So what are the details of the MOU that we're discussing tonight?
It's the MOU between the school district and the police force uh that specifies uh how the SRO program will operate the cost sharing the goals of the of the program um Chief Calvert and I did discuss uh the provisions around adding future SROs because that that could be something that uh if we were to do amended or new um MOU with the police force that is that is an option there's a cost associated with that that the board would need to consider as part of its budgeting process.
Okay so is that what we're also discussing in this?
Well you have a discussion item so you when you're having that discussion now to learn more about the SRO program but you also have on your agenda to provide direction to staff if you wish around that.
Okay. Okay I have a couple of questions um you had mentioned that the officers go through a significant training so are the officers in the MOU program are they selected or do they volunteer for the program and then go through the training?
Well I I know that Danny could answer that better than me but I do know as we're I've been a part of the process for three cycles and so that my understanding is a specialized position and that an interested officer would apply for the position and then they would go through a process to be to be selected.
Okay um and then how do what are the criteria that we make the selection on because did you say that we're part of the selection process?
I can't comment on HR matters other than to say that we made a we had multiple candidates involved in the process and the ultimate decision lies with the city of Laguna Beach and the Laguna Beach Police Department.
Okay so we're not actually participating in the actual selection of who currently of who we have on campus is that correct?
It's still their officer yeah it's their employee yeah.
Um because some of this is we're you know we're still learning on some of these things. Can you outline who pays for what what part of the of the SRO program like how I know it's half and half but is there a distinction between what half we pay for and what half the city pays for?
I don't know the answer to that we can uh follow up and provide that in a response to the board.
I I I think I know the answer to that but um check me I think we each pay half of the salary I think we each pay half of the benefits we also pay for half of the car which I think is about forty thousand dollars.
Well I hope so since we get to decorate it we should pay for some of it um that's my opinion okay um so who so are there hours around these um current SROs that there because right now the biggest emphasis right is that they're on campus so is there an hourly like a you know eight to four eight to two eight to one what distinguishes after-hours activities what's during what's within the scope of the MOU what would be considered an extra charge?
Yeah and uh Michael and perhaps Officer Lopez uh we may want to ask him up to answer some of these detailed questions about his work but just to confirm the earlier question you had around the funding uh President Perry's recollection of how it's structured is correct it's half and half. It's half and half.
And then schedule wise, we have committed to, and it's articulated in the MOU, there's four 10-hour shifts. Monday through Thursday is one of the FTE shifts, and then Tuesday through Friday is the other one. Any after-hours, like coming and attending board meetings or going to football games, historically, that was charges overtime, but we have now rearranged schedules to be able to balance some of the after-school activities. So we try to support with the main hours that are provided as part of the agreement, but there are often overtime hours.
So is there a distinction of what events are considered after-hours? Like, is it all school, campus events?
That is a really good question. I can, I have the agreement. Now, again, we can provide you a copy of this board in the update. We can provide it in the update tomorrow, but I have, just happen to have the MOU here because we were discussing this. I'll just quote a section of it. "The district may request that the city provide additional services performed during the four-day, 10-hour work week to include events such as PTA meetings, school board meetings, back-to-school nights, open houses, sporting events, dances, proms, or other district-sponsored activities."
Thank you, Dr. Keller, for a very thorough report. And I just want to welcome our new SRO that I hope that you don't take or looking under the glass so much as anything about you. It's just we have new board members who are learning the ropes.
It's also accountability and oversight, and that is our job. So when there's an event after hours, so I do have a question. There was a fuel event last spring that happened at 6:00 in the evening, and the officers were seen at the site. So who would be paying for that? Because it's not a district-related event. So is the city paying for that or are we paying for that?
I don't have any information on that.
Can we find out who paid for that?
Yes.
Thank you. So are we also asking about if we want to have a third SRO? Is that part of this conversation? Or a female SRO? Or?
We, the board can, the, the MOU is an agreement that you have with the police department. And so at any time, we could approach the city around renegotiating it and restructuring it. I think that the city would, and the chief would be open to the concept. I know that he's open to the concept of a third SRO, provided that the district pays for it. And so that would, as I mentioned earlier, a question for you and your budgeting process. If it's something the board prioritizes, it's something that we can absolutely do. On the question of requiring one of the officers to be a female, that would be a discriminatory hiring element and likely illegal. So that, that is unlikely to be something that they would agree to.
So if we wanted to bring in a third SRO, we can't define that we would like it to be a female or Ashley Crotean, and not because our SROs aren't fabulous. So thank you. You're very lovely. I've met you.
Yes.
Right, I understand. So, but I'm also a shout out because I know you guys are great, so I'm asking that clarifying question of, we can't select. If we were to hire a third SRO to address the discussion of female students, we can't necessarily specify a female SRO, is that correct?
I'm not an employment attorney, but I have served in the human resources role. I think you'd have discriminatory hiring practice challenges with that. But that can be something that we discuss with the force as a priority for us and investigate it further.
Okay, so we would have to pay for a third SRO. We can't specify what it would, who it would be. So the idea of bringing in a third and spending that money doesn't guarantee that it could be Ashley or someone equivalent, correct? Okay. And then lastly, I just wanted to say, Officer Lopez, I did meet your brother at 4th of July, and you're going to have to take him to the mat because the discussion was who's more handsome and who's taller and something else I can't remember. But I just wanted to say you guys are like twins, because I over, went over and approached him and he thought I was like, who are you? Because I was like, oh, there he is. So, anyway, thank you so much for asking, answering all the questions. I think it offers a lot to take, to consider. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Your mic's on, so I thought maybe you had a question. If not, are there any, do you have any cards?
Madam President, yeah. If I may offer something to support the board in its process, the president should designate a board member to speak on an item. That board member should ask their questions, make any statements they want, completely, take the time that they need, and then you can call another board member and make sure everyone is, has an opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
I just.
Kels, do you have a question? It's not, this is not discussion, just questions.
There will be discussion. Yeah, no, I'm good, but I have now the appropriate time for.
Yes, if there's no more questions, then we're ready for public comment.
Yeah, and we have Logan Marshall.
Hi, Logan. You're going to be our student rep, aren't you?
Yes, that's, that's.
Welcome.
But today, today I'm just coming here as a member of the public.
I understand, but it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well. Good evening, members of the board. Guys, my name is Logan Marshall, and I just want to speak briefly about the process of the new SRO and something that I think is vital to both school safety and school spirit is the importance of having a truly interested school resource officer on campus. I think something that you were talking about, President Perry, about how students can be scared to come to the counseling team, really gets eliminated when they have an SRO that they trust, such as last year, Officer Ashley, because that's something that just wearing a badge doesn't bring, is the trust that comes with having an SRO that is at football games or is at, you know, student events, that students constantly see all the time and are able to build a connection with, that they see not only just on campus, but also within the community. So something that the past school board representatives, Carter and Kate both talked about, as well, I've talked with Carter individually, about how having a SRO who's truly invested in the community and in the students is the utmost important thing in a school resource officer. So that's just why I wanted to contribute on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And the other public comment is from Fesa Zuziak.
Evening, Fesa Zuziak. I'm a high school staff member and a parent of two graduates. Dee, thank you for putting this on here. It is very important. I understand that it is an agreement with the city, and they have to want to come to the table too. But I think what we need to look at, Dr. Glass touched on some things, Dee, you touched on a lot, is the fact that the four-year rotation is the big issue. This should be a program where they can apply for it. Ashley wanted to stay in this position, but because of the four-year dictate, that can't happen. I'm going to give you very firsthand experience. I sit in the health class for seven years now. I have watched the difference between a male SOR. I talked to Officer Lopez in York today and said I was going to be speaking. It has nothing to do and no disrespect for them. The difference between a male officer speaking during a lecture and when Ashley came in. Ashley talked to the kids just flat out, this is the way it is. I watched female students after class in tears go up to the teacher and say, we need to speak to her. They didn't go to the counselor, and I know I'm not, I don't want to give any disrespect to our counseling staff, but the way a female can come in with the uniform and create that trust, I know we can't mandate it, but if we have somebody who's interested, this town is too small to not be able to turn on a dime to help our community and make things happen. Our students are dealing with things my students and my children never had to deal with. They're dealing with things that even when we wrote this in 2019, these students are dealing with things that didn't happen then when this came to fruition. Ashley has that expertise. I saw firsthand some of my sped students get in issues where, or some of my students where the sexting thing would happen, and they didn't know what to do until Ashley came in and spoke about it. And they're like, oh, I'm not alone. I'm not scared. There's somebody who's going to trust me. I think this position needs to be somebody who really wants to work with our youth, who wants to put the time and effort into it and wants to make those connections, because it's the connections that matter, not just a four-year rotation that, okay, I'll volunteer and do it, and I'll get the experience to add to what I'm doing. But somebody who really, I mean, those of us that are educators working, we're there because we're passionate about the kids. So I just really think that we need to try to get the city to end the four-year rotation and make it something that they can, an officer can apply for who really wants to do this.
Thank you. Okay.
No more cards.
No more cards? Board discussion? Dr. Kels?
I think it's hard to say goodbye, and I think it's hard to be new. And I think we need to give our new SRO a chance. And I think, I was one of the leading advocates for the second one. I'd like to have four SROs. But again, the time to discuss this is at budget time, that, you know, can we afford it? And then for the administration to negotiate with the city to see if they're interested in partnering with another one. I also have a little bit of background in minimal from being the dean of the College of Health where criminal justice and criminalistics reported to me. So I, we trained all the cops and we built a crime lab and stuff like that. But I do know that they have a real structure in police departments, and you have to, you have to go along with that, that it's, it's something hard to break out of. And so that, I think that will be the hardest thing as far as for us taking more control over who gets it.
Yeah, I wanted to add a couple of comments to that. I have mentioned in here before that my brother is an SRO and has been doing it for years. And the conversation here sounds a little bit like this is some, that the SROs are accountable to us and they're accountable to the police department and in partnership with us. And Officer Perez, and I assume York, who I have not really met yet, applied for this because they really wanted to do this. And I know Officer Perez is just fantastic with our students. So I have no doubt that these are people who really want to be here doing this and are eager to do whatever it takes to, you know, fulfill those duties in partnership with, with Dr. Keller and, you know, pick up on some of what the students may feel might be missing without a, without a female SRO. So I'm very confident that we can do that. And I want to thank both of them for, you know, taking on this work. I think it's also tricky, to your point, Fesa. I agree that four years limits the ability to really learn everything you need to learn to, you know, become integrated into the school. But I also know from a police department perspective that, you know, some people see it, some people don't want to do it, but it's also a great way to spend your days as a police officer, and other police officers want a chance to do it. So I just think a lot of these are complicated things that have nothing really to do with the school district, except we continue to advocate for what we would like in the district and find ways to work with our SROs to have as strong a collaboration as we can. And that's the way we problem solve on this. And consider in the future, of course, whether or not a third SRO makes sense.
I would have to concur with Member Malcheski. I think if you're in this position right now, you're choosing to be there and you want to be there. At the same time, I also understand and respect the need for a female adult that the staff or that the students can feel very comfortable going to. And it's, you're right. I mean, it's, it's a city-driven staffing decision that we're trying to, you know, impose our desires onto it, that what the students are asking for. So it sounds like we need to come back to this and figure out a solution, if we have one, or if there's something that, some way that our staff can fill the role that Ashley embodied or find a different solution that involves Ashley, I don't know, with, while maintaining the wonderful SROs that we have. Because I've interacted with both of them several times, and it's lovely. I will say, one of the, I was here in the room, I think, when this first discussion came up on whether we wanted an SRO, and to Member Kelly's point, at the time, it was the first one, and it was somewhat controversial. There's, there was, at the time, the discussion was, does an SRO on campus cause more issues or less issues? Does it cause fear or it's not? And to have been in that room then and to be sitting here now as just, just as a person, knowing the impact that our SROs have had on our students, I think is, demonstrates the value of the program. And so for that, I'm really grateful that we do have it. I totally just lost my train of thought. Sorry, I completely lost my train of thought. The, the SRO programs and the female, I think that that, I mean, that's a valid concern. And I, and I know that we can't impose that. So I certainly would encourage the SROs. Oh, one of the things, so that first officer was Officer Corn, Officer Cornelius. And Bigger Than Life shared a lot of his stories, which I think also resonated with the kids. So I think each officer is going to bring a different perspective to things. And Officer Corn sharing his experiences in his personal life, I think, humanized him to the students in a way that was really impressive. And I know that the SROs since then have done the same thing. Officer Fred was up on stage for the Spelling Bee play at the high school, and he got himself involved and he earned a lot of respect. And with that, what happens then is you all go back into the community after your four years, and students, residents see you and recognize you, and it changes the dynamic of the perception of the police force in a very, very positive way. And I think a lot of this kind of, so it is a difficult conversation in the sense of the students needing to have someone that they can go to, because we need to keep our eyes on the students and what they need. And if this is something that they're asking for, that they don't feel they had before, with, with all respect to the staff, that is something we have to listen to. And we have to find a better solution than what we're doing. It doesn't mean that what we haven't been doing, because the SROs were a great solution and we had all of the staff that's there as well, but clearly, there seems like there's some kind of a disconnect, especially at the high school, with the students to know that they can go to staff. So whether, so I think personally, I think there's a further conversation to be had about how can we make sure that our female students are had, are served? But I don't think it's a conversation that we should push down the road for many weeks, months, or anything. The school's starting in a couple of weeks. And it would be good for us to be able to hit the ground running with the female students or any of the students, knowing that there is somebody there that they could address this conversation with. So I don't know if that really.
Sherry, or Ms. Morgan, I want to push back on that a little bit. I think the issue is in that, we have many people who are able to talk to female students and do a great job with it. I think the issue is that when you're talking to someone in uniform, you get a different kind of advocacy. It's, the question isn't, how can I help you feel better about this? The statement is, they did this to you, I'm a cop and we can fix this. That's what students are concerned about, wanting to have that feeling. And, you know, my brother specializes in sexual assault and sexual harassment and, you know, has a page in the yearbook, you know, as a tribute to him. So my point being that there's no reason that Officer Perez and Officer York can't take on that role in conjunction with Dr. Keller, who works with them using some of our female staff, to have the power of advocacy combined with effort to provide support to the students.
On the board, or there's repetitious exchanges? Can all the members of the board have an opportunity to make their comments?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, I think this is, I mean, some people might say, boy, this is a lot of talk about one topic, but I think this is an exceeding.
one topic, but I think this is an exceedingly important topic and it's something that I've been thinking about and watching for many years. In the opening remarks, I couldn't hear because of acoustics, I couldn't hear what Board Member Kelly was saying, but I got the general feeling that I probably didn't agree with him. But I did, I was able to hear his comments about this subject and I agree with everything he said very strongly. And I thought he said it very well. And I also wanted to respond to Ms. Zuziak, who I, as I understood it, you were speaking in your individual capacity, not as a member of the staff and whatnot. I appreciated that. And the thing about it is, is that the, when I, when I think of the SROs, the first thought I'm thinking about is campus security and the safety and security of the kids. And I really support the SRO program from that standpoint. And then in addition, as all of you have said, we have this, you know, we have this augmentation and this wonderful, you know, additional function that's developed. And we all value it and we all care about these SROs and they do a fantastic job and they keep our kids safe. And, but the thing, one thing that I would say about this is, it's important now and as we go forward in the future to develop this program and to sustain it, to understand something that I think's been sort of referred to, and Joan, I think you mentioned it and sort of referred to it, I would go a little bit deeper and say this. If you're a police officer, you're a commissioned officer in a law enforcement corps, and your career development depends on you being able to go into a job, do it well, and move on to another job and do it well, and move on to another job and do it well. And, you know, we talk about Officer Cornelius. On, when we were, I think, down at the same city council meeting where you were introduced, they had several officers who had been promoted. And Officer Cornelius was one of the officers that was promoted. And, and I actually had a discussion about the fact that he was a very popular SRO. And when it came time for him to rotate out, a lot of people wanted him to stay. But he was extremely professional in how he handled that and said, I'm sorry, I love you, I want to stay, but I can't stay because I have to move on in my career. And the fact of the matter is, the observation, observation made by somebody down at that meeting who has a basis for knowing, said that Officer Cornelius would not be there that day getting promoted if he had stayed in his SRO job. Because having been, anybody that's been in the military and anybody that's been in law enforcement knows, you can be the victim of your own success if you get clientitis and you, and I, in my own military career, I was able to get extended in the same job four or five times until I had been for 12 years in the same position. And it meant that I had to move on in my career, which I was able to do. I was able to move out and up. But the point is, basically, if you stay in a job too long, you are limiting your career opportunities. And I think that that's relevant here and we have to keep it in mind. But that having been said, I just want to say, Ms. Zuziak, that my daughters all went to public schools in the District of Columbia. And things went on in the schools there that we wouldn't even believe, starting with everybody going through metal detectors in the morning to get on campus. And they had SROs there and they were, a lot of them were women. And a couple of times when my daughters needed to be straightened out on a couple of issues, they stepped in and did what I could never do with my daughters in terms of really straightening them out. So I have a very high appreciation for the value of women SROs on campuses, because my own daughters benefited from it. So I agree with you and your sentiments very strongly, but I just wanted to point out, there is this career development issue that we have to be aware of.
Thank you. So I, my thoughts right now are, it's been a blessing to have Officer Ashley Croden and a lot of young people felt comfortable coming forward than ever had before, even though we had counselors here. But our counselors and social workers are critical for the long-term care and support of our students. But we also, we've got to get away so students feel comfortable going to them in the beginning or going to the SROs. And I'm for giving the SROs and the counselors and the social workers a chance to really work on this and see how it, it goes with our students. We know now that we've been missing something and we want, we want to fix it. I think we should hold off perhaps adding to the MOU until we hear back. Every, what do you guys think? We, well, our to-do item was to discuss if we wanted to change the MOU or add to it. We, well, we could have, we could add specific training that we wanted.
I, I trust that they're getting all the training that they need and we just need to make females feel, in a moment where they were used to a female officer, that they have the same level of support. And I think Dr. Keller is really committed to that. So I'm actually quite comfortable with where we are because we've been very clear, oh, it is on, we've been very clear about the need for collaboration to serve female students. So I feel like that is the directive that Dr. Keller's heard and our SROs have heard.
Are, are you in favor of the further training for them on some of these issues that they...
I, I don't question the training that they've received. I actually agree with Dr. Kelly that part of the issue is that there's a sense of loss, that there's not a female SRO. But I think that both of them are adequately trained and Dr. Keller wants to provide the support with the staff of female counselors that we have. And that we can ask them to work on providing simultaneously advocacy and emotional support to young women who, you know, feel like they've had an event happen and there's no female SRO. I am very confident that those two groups working together can address that.
I mean, I, I feel strongly that they need, that things have changed so quickly that training should happen for our, our counselors and our social workers and...
But that statement, I'm not disagreeing about the need for statement, but your statement implies that they're, everybody's not already getting adequate training and there's no basis for saying that. So I have complete faith that they've heard us and if they need extra training, I would trust them to do that. But absent a very long discussion of every single thing they've been trained to do, I don't think that's a real thing that we can ask them to do. I don't know that they need additional training. I do know that they need to hear what the concerns of students are and figure out how to work together in terms of simultaneously advocating and supporting our female students to make them feel that they've been heard. And if they decide that more is needed in order to do that, I trust that they'll do it. I don't know that they need more training. It doesn't, because I don't know anything about the training they've received.
Can I ask another quick question? Do we have any data on, and I'm not asking for personal information, I'm not asking for anything like that. I want to be real clear, because I guess the word "how many" somehow gets interpreted that way. Do we have any idea of how many reports we've gotten that went to SRO, Ashley Croten, SRO Croten versus our female staff? And if there's something that's done in the health department that our students are resonating with, can we work with our SROs and our, and I, maybe the MOU says this, maybe it doesn't, I don't know, but where they are working directly with our staff in like the health class? So that maybe it's a female staff member, counselor, and our SRO together doing the health presentation? Because then you're also able to bring the whole relationship conversation, like a predatory relationship. I didn't hear anybody say that, which is, maybe it's all included, but I think, you know, there's all these things that have evolved because of technology, because of where we are in society, because of all of it, that by having an MOU or by having an officer, that if this rotation, they're male, then we have a female staffer that is recognized as partner with them in that process. So that whenever they're presenting to students, a female staffer is with them, especially if it's, you know, sex ed or something like that, to give that same message to them. Because I think to Member Malchesky's point, one of the things that the, that Member, that Ashley Croten brought was, oh, a sexting text, you can do this, you can do that. And, and maybe that's what's missing in our, in our counselors, because their approach is a little different, whereas I think the SROs have an approach that resonates with the kids as far as in action.
But Mrs. Morgan, can I just respond to that? Or were you going to say something?
I just wanted to have Dr. Kelly be able to say something.
Yeah, again, it's not our job to micromanage how this is handled. I trust Dr. Glass to have heard this, to be able to talk with Dr. Keller about it, to ensure that there's adequate training, and for the SROs who are also trained to work together, because we have expressed what the concerns are. And I think that should be the end of the discussion, because we're not supposed to figure out for them how they do this. This is what Dr. Glass is here for. I trust that all of these professionals are able to figure this out. We have all the right people here in the room and we have, they have been trained. And I trust that they'll ask for additional training if they need it. I, I would like to move on because I trust the people who are here and Dr. Glass to do this.
Dr. Kelly?
Dr. Miles Chesky said exactly what I wanted to say, except I wanted to lead off with saying that Dr. Keller leads an exceptional department and that I have full confidence in him and his staff. And to be licensed, you have to have all this training also ongoingly. So I know that between the licensing requirements for psychologists, the counselors, and the social workers, and what we provide, there is adequate training going on there. In fact, there's probably too much.
I, I disagree kind of, because the MOU says that the, our SROs will help with alcohol problems, drug problems, absenteeism. There's nothing that they're supposed to do in that MOU that has to do with sexual issues, sexting or any of that. So I think, so I think that should be added in there, because I think that's a newer part of the job.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just another suggestion to support the board's process. You've had, introduced the item, had a presentation, asked questions, had discussion, had comment. At this point, it's appropriate to call for motions. And if there are no motions, then you can move to your next item.
I'd like to make a motion that we review the MOU for the content of, of, I move that we review the MOU to determine the content of services that the, that the officers bring to our students, to ensure that we, that they are part of the process with our students in our health classes, et cetera, because that is what the students are asking for. And our job is also to listen to the students. So that's, that's my motion. If that makes sense.
I second that. All in favor?
Ms. Weber to repeat the motion for clarity?
Motion to review the MOU to determine the content of services the officers bring to our students to ensure they are part of the process with our students in health classes.
One second. Uh, the President Perry. And vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Are you opposed? Oh, okay, okay. Pass this by. Let's move on. Mr. Conlin, can you provide an introduction to the collective bargaining agreement?
This is the, you'll be opening a public hearing for the public to comment on the agreement between the Lubuva TA for the 25-26 school year and LBUSD. So again, this is an opportunity for the public to provide comment.
What, what's the time it's opening? What'd you say?
The time is currently 7:29.
7:29, okay. Clerk Hills, are there any cards to speak at this item?
No, there are not.
Okay. So no speakers? The public hearing is closed at?
7:29.
Okay, okay. Mr. Conlin, would you like to present the next item?
Sure. Again, this is a public hearing for the, opportunity for the public to comment related to the 25-26 compensation proposal for unrepresented employees listed on the management confidential and unrepresented salary schedule. And the public hearing can open at 7:29.
Clerk Hills, are there any speaker cards to speak on this item?
No.
Okay.
Maybe you didn't, I just didn't hear you. Oh, so that's not, so we need to, so then we need to amend the, the agenda, because the agenda mentions compensation proposal with nonrepresented classified and certificated employees, right?
Those are individuals on the management salary schedule. They are classified, unrepresented members, they're not affiliated with CSEA.
Right, but this motion, item 8B, says certificated employees. Isn't that CSEA?
No.
Oh, that's, that's staff, sorry. But the first one was... Okay.
It says nonrepresented classified and certificated employees.
We've always referred to certificated, I thought, in conversation, that it was staff, but I'm probably a little confused, so thank you.
There are certificated members that are not part of Lubuva.
Okay, the public hearing is closed at?
7:31.
7:31, thank you. Now, information item from Human Resources, report of the fourth quarter report of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement. Mr. Conlin?
Yes, thank you. We have not received any uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement for the fourth quarter.
Thank you. Board members, are there any comments or questions? No? Mr. Hills, are there any speaking, speaker cards? Thank you. Okay, action items, business services. An approval to award a contract to Runal Clark Architects for architectural services to remove a temporary relocatable restroom building and install a temporary relocatable classroom building at El Moro School. Dr. Glass, do you want to introduce this?
Thank you, Madam President. We have Facilities Director Ryan Zeta here to brief the board on this. Thank you.
Good evening, President Perry, Superintendent Dr. Glass, and members of the board. This item is for the approval that will allow staff to retain architectural services from the firm Runal Clark Architects for the design and construction administration to remove and replace a leased restroom relocatable building with a leased classroom relocatable building at El Moro Elementary School. The need is a reflection of increased student enrollment in our TK and kindergarten grades. This unit provides the needed classroom space on a temporary basis for the 25-26 school year. Runal Clark Architects is recommended to be retained to complete the services due to their prior work on the existing restroom relocatable and adjacent portables. They have the existing knowledge and expertise to process this project with the state architect's office quickly and also to ensure that they can work with the inspectors to ensure the project is installed, meeting all requirements. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Board members, questions?
Ryan, I just have a really quick question. Last year, if you could just help me to remember, if you recall it, last year, we had a conversation about moving one of the restrooms. And there was some concern about whether moving that restroom was going to create a problem because it was so centrally located. So I'm wondering if there was any outcome to that and how this impacts that, because it looks like it's another classroom with a restroom inside.
Absolutely.
That has anything to do with that.
Exactly. So this does play off that, that conversation from last year, where we did add a temporary restroom at El Moro to make sure we had appropriate restroom facilities there for, to meet our student needs. As it worked out throughout the school year... there for, to meet our student needs. As it worked out throughout the school year, with the addition of the preschool and the building they're in, the preschool restroom that was created was sufficient to meet those needs. And the campus having restrooms at each of their classroom buildings there for those, those classrooms did not end up needing this restroom, and it was not utilized throughout the year. So looking ahead at a viable location for a temporary portable, it would make sense to remove and replace this unused relocatable leased building with a new relocatable leased building just to meet our needs for the next year on a temporary basis.
And then my dumb question is, when I look at the third, fourth SAI, could you just remind me what that is that's moving to TOW? Because I wasn't exactly sure what was happening on the map.
Maybe I'll defer to him, Mr. Conlon.
So that is the, the third through fifth class, third through fifth grade self-contained class that was at, El Moro has been moved to be aligned with the K2 self-contained class at Top of the World.
I have a couple of questions. The contract is for, that is being requested is for Runan Clark Architects, but it's, if it's replacing an existing building, there, some of the scope of work includes site preparation and AC pavement for portable building. I know we have bathrooms there, but we have two other buildings. So isn't the, is the site not already prepared for a building? And if, and is that not a service that is included in the mobile, in this mobile modular contract when it talks about delivery, essential material handling fee, ramp install? That's, is the ramp on the building or is the ramp, addressing the ramp to get the building into the school?
I think it's a little bit of everything. So the design will cover all the construction. So what you have there are the, the proposals from the modular company to remove the leased portable units. That's there. And that's the 11,000 and change proposal. You have another proposal from Mobile Modular that's for installation of the new classroom building. That's a one-time charge. And then after that, it's an ongoing monthly lease, similar to what we currently have with the units that are there. Now, the architect services will cover the installation of the classroom, including the ramp. And there's also a restroom inside. So there's a plumbing, electrical, there's an access with an accessible ramp. And all that has to be shown in their plans processed with the state architects office for compliance and then inspected. So they'll cover the design side, and then the modular company will cover the installation.
Okay. And was, didn't you say there was a bathroom there already? So isn't there plumbing already there?
There is plumbing already there. There is electrical and plumbing for the restroom that will be disconnected in the back of the restroom. And then when the new building comes in, the restroom is never in the same exact location. So you'd have to then reconnect. So you'd have to then remake those connections that had to be done per, per code, per plumbing electrical code. It's a different building. It's got two panels versus one. So you're going to have some adjustments in the design which has to be included in the plans that get processed with the state and inspected by a state inspector.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Clerk Hills, are there any public comments? Okay. Any other questions? Discussion? Is there a motion to award a contract to Runal Clark Architects?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval to authorize the additional architectural design services for Laguna Beach High School pool modernization project for the design of SEQA project design features in an amount not to exceed $132,550. Dr. Glass?
And again, Ryan Zada will be here to brief the board on this item.
For a jump right, I did want to apologize and let you know that our project architect for this project, Roger Clark, is here from Runal Clark Architects. So if we have any additional questions specific to their, their services, he is available tonight. So the, the SEQA additional design services for the project, design features is a positive impact based on community feedback and transparency during the SEQA planning process. The scope includes, but it's not limited to, the addition of a sound wall and covered shade structure along the east pool deck, photovoltaic electrical panels, modification of the site lighting system, and reduction in building heights, including walls. A proposal was received by staff from Runal Clark Architects on May 23rd. It's being brought to you tonight for consideration and approval. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions?
I just want to thank you for being responsive to the community because these were basically what the neighbors had asked for.
It's a benefit also to our district. So we're, we're very pleased to bring them forward, forward to you tonight for, for approval.
Was the, the original contract, is that, did that not include design services to get us to SEQA? And if so, would that not have included changes and modifications? Or is that part of the delivery process of the contract?
The contract approved included a, a scope that included a design up to a conceptual level to 100% design documents that then came to the board and was approved. And then we went through the SEQA process for that specific design. These additional items were outside of that original design. So this is the cost for the 100% design documents to include these items. So they'd go back out to their consulting firms, and then they would then do this additional design work, add it back into that 100% design doc set, and then develop them into actual construction plans. So there is additional services in addition to the original scope that was in the original proposal.
So when we had our SEQA meeting, we had asked, I had asked a couple of questions about design features. And it was told to me then that this was for SEQA, which was environmental, not design. And, and...
Their project...
Now you're calling it design. So does that mean that the design is part of the SEQA now? But it wasn't before? Or how does that work?
So when we went through SEQA, there was some mitigation that did occur through SEQA. It was a few items, but they were more related to observation for, for paleontology, artifacts, Indian tribes, those sorts of mitigate mitigation. But what came out, which was at the board's purview, was to do, they, they could condition approval on project design features. So they're not items that we mitigated. They're items that the board felt would be a benefit to the community and to the district. And so those items is what this scope of services includes, which would be a sound wall on the east pool deck, a covered shade structure on the east pool deck, solar panels on top of that shade structure, all this to get designed. redoing the plans to lower the buildings, minimum of two feet, including a redesign of the arcade column structure along Park Avenue. So extensive redesign is occurring in the plans that came out of these project design features. I don't know, Roger, missing anything?
Mr. Zada, is, is it correct to say, just in terms of what you're discussing right now, that the, that Runal Clark, Runal Clark was commissioned to, to do everything required for SEQA? In addition, the school district made a decision to put things into the SEQA plan that the neighborhood felt should have been part of SEQA, but it was not required by the state. And we opted to add those design elements as part of our SEQA discussion.
Yes, that's correct.
So, exactly. So these are things that were not really new designs, but that the neighbors felt, even though they weren't required from the state, should be included in our SEQA discussion because it had to do with things like noise remediation or lowering the height of the thing. So there was a little bit of blending of design elements in response to Steve and Gary and Steve who, and who were representing, representing neighbors who were very concerned about all the environmental impact things, even when they were not required by the state. So that would be the difference. No, I was trying to make sure I understood that, that, that you had asked the question. So I was asking if that was actually what happened. And is my take on that?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, other questions, Ms. Clerk Hills? Oh, we're not to comment yet. Are there any, we first have to see if anyone from the audience has comments. Okay. We can move to comments now then. Go ahead.
I would like to comment. I think it's been a good discussion. The questions are good. I would like to comment that, you know, there, as this thing has been debated and discussed, there have been, there's been a lot of information and misinformation and disinformation put out publicly about the neighbors. And, you know, people have, and organizations and entities have put out information and put out advocacy and put out argumentation, basically saying that this is a not in my backyard thing and that they were, that neighbors were out of selfish interests. They were trying to interfere with something that was good for the community and good for the students. And I think the people that did that owe an apology to the neighbors. Because the fact of the matter is Laguna Beach is a city where we have always protected the rights of property owners. And we have a design review board. I've been through the design review process, and I didn't like it at all. And I felt like it gave neighbors power over my property that I didn't want them to have. But in the end, it also forced me and my architect to, and my builder, to come to grips with what the rules are and what the rights of other adjacent property owners were. And that's part of the discipline, and that's part of what living in Laguna is all about, is that we respect the fact that people pay a lot of money to live here, and we respect their rights to defend their property. The original plan that was proposed by the school district had an underground garage going in on Short Street for underground parking. It had huge buildings with tennis courts on top of them, on top of them. And it was just a grandiose delusion that anybody was going to allow that to happen. And the neighbors had every right and responsibility to make their views known. And they did so, as far as I can tell, in a reasonable and rational way. And yet, there have been materials published saying that they engaged in misinformation, and they engaged in propaganda, and they were acting in a selfish and uncivil way. And I think that was really regrettable because this, the neighborhood around Laguna Beach High School, when the original piece of land was donated, the, the people in the neighborhood that had houses there had to make a decision that they were going to allow their neighbor, neighborhood to become the site of the school. And they did it. And, you know, so people say, well, if you buy a house next to the school district, you should understand that, you know, you know you've got the school there, and so you shouldn't complain about what happens. Well, you know, the reality is that if you really follow that logic, that means if you buy the house and the school is in one condition, that then the school can't change the condition of it because you bought it with that being the condition. The reality is, is that over the period of time, the school's going to want to modify itself. It's going to want to modernize. It's going to want to change. And it should be prepared to engage with the neighbors on the impact the change is going to have on the neighborhood. And this thing got turned around. So it was like the neighborhood, neighbors were doing something wrong by protecting their property rights. Can you imagine if you had a couple of hundred underground parking spaces at Laguna Beach High School? And the idea was that during the summer, that the city could send traffic up there to park up there during the festival of arts? That would basically turn that neighborhood into an extension of downtown. And so, all I can say is I commend the neighbors for doing it. There was a lot of talk about, you know, the election and, and all the rest of this. I never, I never took any position in any election about, based on anything that the neighbors were saying. But I do believe they had the right to do what they did. And so I think that it was an unfortunate chapter in our school community and our school culture, that people who were standing up for their property rights got singled out. And, you know, it wasn't just people that had the fingers pointed at them. It was all the neighbors. I know, I know 20 people that live up there, and they all felt the same way. And yet, a few people got singled out to be ridiculed, and there was cyberbullying. And I think adults set a pretty bad example for the kids of cyberbullying over some of these issues. So I'm glad that we've had the remarks that are made here tonight about the fact that the school district finally, in the end, responded well and did the right thing by the neighbors by changing the plans and investing in a future relationship with the people in the neighborhood as positive as it has been in the past.
I agree. Any more discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the additional architectural design services for Laguna Beach High School pool modernization project for the design of the SEQA project design features in an amount not to exceed $132,500?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Oh, you're still here, Orange. Approval, sorry. Approval to authorize additional design services to modernize transitional kindergarten and kindergarten classrooms at El Moro and Top of the World Elementary Schools in an amount not to exceed $59,000 to address DSA access compliance and project certification requirements.
And again, Mr. Zada will brief the board on this matter.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of this additional service for TBP Architects would allow for code compliant upgrades to the existing school drop-off at El Moro at the traffic circle next to the main office. And it will also allow for the architect to support the certification project, certification process of past projects at El Moro and Top of the World Elementary Schools, going back to 1999 to 2002. The district operates under the rules and regulations of the Division of the State Architect, and with certification, liabilities transfer from the district to the state.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Zada? Are there any comments from the, from the audience, Clerk Hills? No. Okay.
Can I just ask a procedural? Can I just ask, it's just a procedural question. Is there, like, item 10 was specific to award the contractor Run, who, sorry, how do you pronounce that? Runal, thank you. Runal Clark. But yet, item 10 doesn't identify. I know the contracts say Runal and Clark, but then 10C doesn't identify either. Is that just a, just...
I think it goes back to portable projects. The portable projects are temporarily released, and the cost involved the portable company and the architect. And so that's why it's written differently. You're talking about the subject of the board item. Where these other projects, these capital projects, they're very specific, straightforward, and they're, they're not, for some reason, we, we approach those relo projects a little bit differently. We try to give you all the backups. It's an ongoing cost, too. So they're, they're a different type of service. Good question.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Is there a motion to authorize additional design services to modernize transitional kindergarten and kindergarten classrooms at El Moro and Top of the World in an amount not to exceed $59,000 to address DSA access compliance and project certification requirements?
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Tonight, I'm human resources, approval of the 2027-28 school student instructional calendar. Mr. Conlon?
Thank you, President Vickers. So just, wow, I apologize. President Perry, I apologize for that slip. So we have a, a quick presentation around the student, the journey of the student instructional calendar. So in 2017, the Board of Education directed staff to establish a committee to evaluate the student instructional calendar and identify adjustments that would better support academic performance and student wellness. This process led to a formal recommendation for adjustments to be considered in the adoption of the 2019-2020 instructional calendar. Look at that. All right. So the committee included parents, teachers, staff, administrators, city officials, and two board members. Between October 2017 and March 2028, or 2018, the group met to review relevant data and identify areas of opportunity to improve the student instructional calendar while continuing to meet the state mandated requirement for 100 instructional days. Key opportunities identified through this process included ending semester, the first semester at winter break, providing a homework-free period to reduce student stress, support student wellness, and allow students to enjoy the holiday season with no, with no final exams, addressing low student attendance on the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week to reduce instructional disruption, the need for reteaching, starting the school year earlier to support more natural instructional pacing and improve student preparation for APs and statewide assessments in the spring, an academic calendar with a later start reduces the time teachers have to cover essential content before AP and state testing, aligning the start of the school year with the beginning of the fall sports to better support college applications, athletic recruitment, and transitions to higher education, and aligning non-student days across grade levels to support family scheduling and reducing disruptions for households with children in multiple schools. So moving to slide three. So the calendar committee submitted the following recommendation to the board, a 180-day school year, the entire week off... school year, the entire week off at the at Thanksgiving break, uh three non-student days to minimize teachers being out of the classroom for PD, and the semester ending before winter break. So based on the committee's findings, the Board of Education approved a revised instructional calendar for twenty nineteen, twenty. That reflected several of the identified opportunities, including an earlier August start, the conclusion of the first semester at winter break. They kept the three-day fall break during the week of Thanksgiving and aligned the non-student days across grade levels. So since that time, the instructional calendar has been refined through an ongoing process um with the calendar committee that includes representation from certificate staff, classified staff, and district leadership. The committee reviews data annually related to the student attendance, engagement, well-being, and performance on AP tests. And then table below shows that. So you can see from twenty nineteen through twenty-twenty-two, the fall break stayed at three days, uh first semester was eighty days, and the mid-winter non-student day was aligned with the Monday after winter break. Historically, there there's always been a non-student day in between semester one and semester two. So moving on to twenty twenty-three. So for the twenty-three, twenty-four student instructional calendar, the board accepted the calendar's committee recommendation for a full five days off for fall break during Thanksgiving week, those shifting those two historically low-attended school days to the first two days of school, which created a Thursday start date. So we experienced that for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the board directed staff to shift the winter non-student day, which had always been between semester one and semester two, to the Friday of MLK weekend, and the board's interest was to reduce the length of the winter break. So now we shift. So in response to the feedback and data reviewing the during this year's calendar committee process, the proposed twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight student instructional calendar addresses the interests of the labor associations to reposition the secondary non-student day between semesters. The proposed calendar includes a seventy-nine-day first semester ending at winter break with the secondary non-student day scheduled for the Friday before the break, the elementary non-student day set for November first, which we've seen the day after Halloween is historically low, lowly attended day, and then the five-day fall break to address the day with low attendance. So secondary staff shared instructional and logistical concerns they experienced during this school year when they did not have a non-student day between semesters. This day has been used historically to finalize first semester grades, allow for makes-up makeup final exams, and provide time for the counseling team to reshuffle students' calendar schedules without the loss of instructional time. So the staff presents this uh recommended calendar for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year for the board's consideration and approval. And we did receive a question earlier in regards to um what the makeup of the calendar committee and per the contract language, in LaBuca, it it states, "A calendar advisory committee composed of three representatives appointed by LaBuca, one CSCA representative, and three representatives appointed by the district shall meet annually to provide a recommendation for a student calendar um two years out for the board for final approval." So with that, the we have the recommended twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar for your review.
Any questions from the board?
When was the committee composition changed? Because the original committee in two thousand seventeen included parents, it included um business, you know, a couple of business people um as well as um I think somebody from the festival. And even then, being a part of that committee, how that worked is that every member of the committee had two votes. And it was run by the superintendent. And so basically, the staff's employer was in the room when there was a discussion. And I and being a part of that discussion, it was interesting because it was not a mutually agreed-upon um calendar, it was just the number of votes that won. So I'm curious as to why the calendar committee now does not include um a more diverse group of people that represents all entities that would be impacted by the calendar.
Sure. So to speak to the twenty-twenty-seven, that was, if you remember, we had historically started after Labor Day. So the conversation of breaking the start of school away from Labor Day was a was a massive decision that had impacts to all aspects of the city. Um so because of so after that, so that's why we had stakeholders from all, you know, all over the 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 community part of that process, because that was a huge shift for this this school district. That that committee and and the board direction gave us the framework for a calendar that existed from twenty nineteen all the way through twenty twenty-three. We applied the same direction that the board had given. So there wasn't, we would just bring forward, here it is, is how is how it lays on on this year's calendar, how it looks on this year's calendar. Now, in in twenty twenty-three, again, that was just the 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 district administration just providing the calendar based on on the board's direction. In twenty twenty-three, we created the calendar committee as part of to to get in input from the union, the unions, um and and district to provide the the next recommended. So there were never any major shifts. I mean, the one discussion was the idea of bringing back the five days at Thanksgiving at the Thanksgiving week, because that was an original interest of the original committee. Um so that was the one shift that happened. And there's a lot of, we did surveys of the community, and there was a lot of uh input saying that that was something that that they valued. Um so again, the reason why we just have, we we shifted to this small calendar committee, just can, all we do is we we sit, we say, okay, these are the parameters set forth by the by the board. And how do you, you know, we look at the calendar and say, how how do you feel that this this lays based on the previous recommendation from the board? Because we're not making major shifts to it, it's like maybe shifting a non-student day here or there, the impact doesn't go beyond um, you know, just the 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 staff. It doesn't, you know, blend into having an impact with the functionality of the city.
No, I appreciate that. I have one other question. Um and it might be better for Dr. Keller to answer, I'm not really sure, but one of the other um one of the other um project or it's one of the other items that was being considered on the calendar in trying to end before the winter break was to um not have homework over the holidays and to have finals done before the winter break as well. I'm curious if there has been what the, because I know that this idea is also starting to become discussed again in the in in um different groups as far as is it still, is it as effective to reduce stress? Because that was the primary goal at the high school level was to reduce stress of the students so that they could relax over Christmas break. However, what's happened is that we have now a compressed semester of seventy-nine days with minimal breaks other than Thanksgiving. So now Thanksgiving is the week that we're doing homework and stuff, not over the Christmas break. But how are the students reacting? And is it time to revisit this idea on all levels from, you know, an education standpoint, from a mental health standpoint? Because I know families that I've spoken to find that the pressure to get college applications done, to get homework done, to get exams done, as well as breathe and sleep, um is actually increasing the stress and the pressure on the students. So I'm just wondering if there's any data on um on that element with the students? And is that something that we need to maybe look at? Um because again, Laguna's always been its own unique district. And as we've moved away from that, are we not, in an effort to be aligned with other districts, are we losing track of our students' needs in the pressures that that December finals date, especially for the high school? Because it's really only relevant to the high school and the middle school, not the elementary school, because they're on trimesters, right? But I think they're going to semesters in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Maybe I'm wrong. Um but anyway, so I would be real curious as to how that, because I know I'm hearing different, I'm hearing that there's a lot of stress on the students right before Christmas.
There's a lot of stress on students in the college application process. Yes, there's a lot of pressure on students during junior year when they're maxing out APs. Uh we know that many of our benchmark school districts have a calendar similar to this where they're ending the ending the winter break right before the that winter holiday. And the goal and the and the philosophy around that is really to have playtime, downtime, and family time, and be able to maximize just decompression. We know that sleep adds to learning, we know that eating and spending time with families, your family, hanging out with your friends, all those things are good, healthy coping strategies. Um and you get very good closure at the end of that window of time. So it is hard, kind of hard to start the wheels and the gears back up after that winter break if you're not constantly revisiting the materials. So um that that I think was the philosophy. And I know challenge success kind of helped us think about, think through that process. How do we maximize wellness, engagement, and belonging? And that's one of the ways that that we arrived at being able to have one of the levers, which was scheduling and use of time. And that we also think creatively about how do we build a master, master schedule? What is what is the best system of, what's the maximum amount of time that we want students in a space to be able to have the deepest learning experiences as well? So I I would rec, I mean, I have a I have a selfish preference that we continue with a similar range. I know that they that is just an extremely, I have a senior that's just graduated and is going to freshman in college, it was a very stressful time. And I would just recommend that. Um I think that when when considering all things on balance, it's probably one of the best models that we have.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to speak, you had asked a question about the seventy-nine-day first semester, that is a break, a deviation from the past. And I asked that question to um to the secondary, to the admin, as well as the secondary teachers that were on the the calendar committee. Um and they had shared what, at the secondary level, that that Friday is an anchor day, especially at the high school, which which is, you're losing about twenty minutes of 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 instruction. So when they, when they look at, okay, what the first semester looks like versus the second semester. Again, first off, at the high school, there's very few semester courses. It's typically just a matter of taking the full year of standards and spreading them between semester one and semester two. They also looked at if if we made it eighty days and pushed it back to a start day of a Wednesday, that that shifted the final schedule. If that would mean the last day of school would be on a Wednesday. And they had a very big concerns about, because they have, they have a set kind of finals week schedule, which which runs Monday through. It's a it's a four-day schedule to get all the finals done. And they had concerns about that being shifted to having to almost have it spread over the final schedule over a two-week period. So they were like, listen, the 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 minimal loss of instructional minutes with a seventy-nine first semester was far outweighed with the positives of keeping it to ensure you had those four, a four-day week to end the school year, because that's that that uh that final schedule was um can be heavily impacted if you don't have four days.
And we're in compliance with seventy-nine days? Because I thought the state mandate was eighty. Is are we still okay with that?
The state mandate is one hundred days for the year. There's there's no state mandate related to the length of semester one versus semester two. Why, one, we have one hundred eight, what did I say, eighty? One hundred eighty is that it's the instructional year that they said. I'm 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 two for two tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. For Kels, are there any? No. Okay. Uh is there a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight student instructional calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Thank you. Okay, um ratification of the twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-six collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AB twelve-hundred, Chapter uh twelve-thirteen, nineteen ninety-one, Government Code three thousand five hundred and forty-seven point five, and CCR Title Five, Section fifteen, four forty-nine, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six negotiated tentative agreement with Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association and the Laguna Beach School District. Are there any comments or questions?
We have some information for you that Assistant Superintendent Conlin will provide, and I will follow up with more commentary.
Thank you. So the association and the district reached a tentative agreement for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six revisions to the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-six agreement. The district and association utilized the interspace bargaining as the process for the negotiations. This tentative agreement includes a three percent increase in compensation for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. The total compensation of three percent is comprised of a two percent on-schedule salary increase, along with the additions of a longevity stipend after ten years of service, which currently to this and for this year would equal seven hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents, and a longevity stipend after nineteen years of service equalling one thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. So the staff recommends that the Board of Education ratify the tentative agreement for the twenty-five, twenty-six revisions to the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-six collective bargaining agreement negotiated by the designated representatives of LaBuca and Laguna Beach Unified School District. To also ask a pointed clarification for a couple of questions we received before the board meeting, um we we were asked if Article seventeen was was part of open for negotiations this year. And it was, Article seventeen was one of the topics that we had opened up as management. It's just through the negotiation process, um no changes were mutually agreed upon in that article, which is why you don't see anything in the tentative agreement for that. Um and then it was a question about, does the school calendar article, what, you know, why it, why it's referenced in LaBuca and not referenced in the CSCA contract? It only exists in the LaBuca contract since the teacher work year overlaps extensively with the student calendar, whereas CSCA doesn't, and but they do have representative at for those conversations. But because the the student calendar and the and the teacher's calendar overlap so so closely, that's why it lives with uh in the LaBuca contract. And uh and the last question in relation to the TA was why there was no, the health and welfare documents were not, were not added to it. In the LaBuca contract, they chose to just have an electronic link, they access their contract electronically, and they can click the link to get those documents. They are in the um the appendix of the CSCA contract, though, that they, that that union has chosen to have those in the in the contract. So that's all for this time.
Is Article twenty-four?
No, if you're talking about the health and welfare documents, it'll be in the in the appendix uh in the back of the CSCA uh contract.
Yeah, but that doesn't have, okay, that's that was, there's an appendix D that is listed that is not in the printed document that we were given. That's, that was what I was referencing. So I don't know what that was.
So you're talking about Appendix D of LaBuca?
Uh, this is in CSCA, it just says eligible members shall be responsible for any costs incurred over the district individual contribution, which is specified in Appendix D, but there is no Appendix D in my book. I mean, it says Appendix B, but it says it'll be added after it's printed.
Okay, so yeah, you have.
So we never got it.
I'll 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 make sure you get those documents. It's just the benefit there.
Thank you, Mike. We'll add that uh to the board update for tomorrow, so all the board members have that. Also, President Perry, uh tonight, I want to address an important matter regarding the employee health benefits in this collective bargaining agreement. For background, our agreements with labor associations include annual limits on how much the district will contribute toward medical, dental, and vision insurance for employees. These contribution caps can vary depending on the type of coverage selected um and the employee's family. Any costs beyond the agreed-upon limits in the in the, excuse me, any costs beyond the agreed-upon limits in the bargaining contract are the responsibility of the employees. As we were reviewing the rates for the upcoming year, we took a closer look at the overall health benefit spending and noticed that the district noted that the district had been contributing amounts toward the employee healthcare costs that exceeded the maximum outlined levels in our agreements. Last year, uh so this fiscal year that has just finished, the overage was approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this coming or the current fiscal year that we are in, the overage is projected to be around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We believe this situation has been developing over a number of years, and we are actively researching how far back it goes and how it originated. I became aware of this last week. From what we've learned so far, it appears that the efforts were likely tied to um or that the overages were likely tied to efforts at that time to encourage employees to choose certain healthcare plans or tiers, possibly as part of creating financially stable plans. You want to create a balance of your employees across your different plans and not have them all um choose one. However, we believe those decisions led to spending beyond what was contractually obligated in our agreements with our unions. This issue was not clearly flagged or addressed in recent years, and it's resulted in a breach of our current agreements with our associations. It's important to acknowledge that and to commit to addressing, it's important to acknowledge this and to commit to addressing it responsibly in partnership with our unions and with transparency to this board and to the community. Let me be clear, all the board members and union leaders at this table have been briefed on this matter, and I want you to know that I am committed to working to address it with honesty, with care, and with fairness. In the short term, I have directed our staff to modestly increase, a modest increase of seven percent to employee healthcare contributions for this year. There may be some variations in that, but on average, it's around seven percent. That's well below what it should be or what it would be to fully correct for the overage. But I believe it's the most responsible and humane and kind thing to do as an organization for our employees. Passing along the full cost of this to our employees would have resulted in rate increases of over two hundred percent in some categories, which would be an unreasonable financial shock. We simply cannot and should not approach it that way. Instead, I recommend and district council recommends the following path forward. Based on the advice of council and my recommendation, we recommend the approval of the current bargaining agreement on tonight's agenda. This represents the result of months of hard work between our teams and our labor partner. The general fund may be used to ob, to absorb the overage of the healthcare contributions, and we believe this can be done without existing any um without impacting any existing programs or services. So I want to be clear on that. Your general fund can absorb this overage, and it has for the past several years. Second, I recommend and your council recommends that you enter into discussions, we enter into discussions with our labor partners to amend the current contract, to account for the district's overage, and formally cure the to account for the district's overage, and formally cure the breach of the contract, so that we're aligned both legally and we have clarity. And third, that we work collaboratively with our partners to evaluate the long-term structure of our health benefits, including how we balance affordability for employees with fiscal responsibility for the district. I want to close by acknowledging that I am still learning about the origins of this issue. I will continue to bring information to you as it becomes available. We would like to ask President Perry if you would put another agenda item on at the next meeting where we can explore this in more depth. But my values in approaching this, again, are clear. It's transparency, it's partnership, it's fairness, and it's fiscal integrity. To our staff and our union partners, thank you for your patience and your willingness to work with us through this. To the board, thank you for the thoughtful leadership that you've already demonstrated as we navigate this. And I know that it is a complex and difficult matter, and I'm confident that we can resolve this in a way, resolve it together in a way that reflects the kind of district and community that we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation. Are there board questions?
I have a few, of course. So you're saying last year it was $500,000, this year it's $800,000, and those are the two years that we know about. So we're saying that the general fund contributed over $1 million to the benefits packages for staff and teachers and unclassified and everyone else?
Last year, around $550,000, and the current year will be around $850,000.
So if we approve, we're approving to spend additional $800,000 that's not in the budget currently, or that's not allocated in the budget to this item?
The, you've approved a budget that gives your administration the authority to spend the general fund up to the amount that you authorized. And so the funds are authorized. The issue is that it breaches the contract we have with our labor partners. We are overspending the maximum amount that's listed in there. So you're, it is, the board has authorized the expenditure of the funds. It is a material enough amount that I feel that it should have been bargained and negotiated, and the board should have been aware of it as you made your budgeting decisions. And that is what I'm proposing that we do going forward.
So the budgeting decisions that we made were not, this did not, was not presented, it didn't come up. How did it, how, okay, who, let me back up. Who is our insurance provided by? Who's the, what is the organization that navigates, that provides all this and helps us set this up?
I'll turn that question over to Mr. Conlon. Sure. So we have, we have, we're in a SEBA pool for Blue Shield and Delta Dental, and then we were direct with Kaiser. We have a partnership with Burnham Benefits, who's, Burnham, now they're called the Baldwin Group. They're our benefit broker. Again, this was brought, this came to my attention when I received the rates that they were going to be using for this year. And I asked, I asked one of my HR technicians to please take a look. And again, all through the insurance committee process, we were informed there's going to be a 7% increase for all the Blue Shield plans and a 5% increase for the Kaiser plans. But when I received the rates from the business office, I asked them to please put these in percentages, and the numbers were, like Dr. Glass had shared, far exceeded the 7% and 5%. So it led me to ask more questions and then bring this to Dr. Glass's attention. And again, this is what we're going to continue to investigate.
How do we determine how we're going to fund each of these categories? Or each of these?
Your, the, the plan, yeah, the plan has a cost. So I'm going to use broad numbers that are not accurate, so please extend me some liberty. Let's say, let's say your, let's say your healthcare plan costs $7 million a year to fund. That is paid for through a combination of district contributions and employee contributions. This, if we had followed what was in the bargaining contract, the district's contribution should have been about $5.5 million. Again, don't hold me to the numbers, we will bring you all of this in detail. The district's contribution last year was actually over $6 million. So that's the breach of the contract that I was talking about. And that's, that's the core of the problem.
Is it typical that we fund these programs annually without board review? Or how did this, how did this continue? Because you say it's been going on for a couple of years now. So how did the, who, who determines how much we're going to fund these? And who has been funding it? Like, how did that happen? Did the board approve it? Or did, because if it's a breach of contract, does that mean the board had never saw it?
The union agreement contains the tiers and how much the district's maximum should be. And you have people here who know far more about that than I did. So that, that is supposed to define what the district's contribution is and what the employee's contribution is. So that, that document should have defined it. It has not, and it's resulted in the district's general fund picking up the overage.
So if you're negotiating the contracts, were you also setting the terms for the, for the insurance? Or is that a different department that does that?
It's not, this isn't handled through human resources, it's through the business office.
So the business office was responsible for funding this fund?
The business office is responsible for managing the portion of, that portion of the health plan. And again, Trustee Morgan, I'd learned about this last week. And I've been in this, I've been in, and I've been in this job for three weeks. I don't have all the details on this.
No, I understand.
Please, and we are committed to addressing this transparently and honestly with you. I do not have the detailed answers that you're asking for tonight, but we will come back with this matter and get into it in some detail. All the detail that you want, once we have more time to investigate it and understand it.
Okay, thank you. I might have more questions, but let me, I'll pass my time now.
Are there questions? Are there, is there any cards from the audience?
No.
Okay, go ahead and make a comment.
Yeah. I would just like to say, Mr. Superintendent, that I really appreciate the way you've handled this. Earlier, not thinking about this, not, I said that if I had to use one word to describe what it's like working with you, it's honesty. And I think you're kind of like, you know, John F. Kennedy in the Cuban Missile Crisis right now, you know, in terms of, this is a very serious matter. And you've handled it really well. And I think that there's a number of things to be said about it. One of them is that this shouldn't happen, shouldn't have been allowed to happen. But I think, as far as I can tell, everybody that has been informed about this, you know, their reaction is just exactly what you said. We need to pull together, and we need to take care of this and address it. And, you know, everybody wants, and just as you said, I think everybody instinctively and without hesitation says, this is a, this is a problem that has to be resolved in a way that's fair to the taxpayers, fair to the schools, and, and fair to the employees. You know, the, you know, there's a lot to be learned and a lot more that we need to know about this. It's kind of an issue of, you know, how it could be that there's an additional $1 million being expended for healthcare coverage and that nobody would notice it. You know, that nobody would notice it on the union side, on the health insurer's side, or on the district's side. But the thing about it is, as you say, we, there needs to be additional knowledge and information. Not knowing how many years it's been occurring is obviously a big thing. But the point is, in the end, you know, this is a, not just a budget execution, fiscal control deficiency issue. This is a labor law issue, and this is, this is an issue of, you know, whereas I think you put the right spin on it. We need to work with the unions to solve this, not get into, you know, unnecessary, you know, like political debate or anything. This is a sensitive thing that has to be dealt with. But I think it's important for the public to understand that there are a lot of factors here coming to play. The, what, from what I understand, when you talk about a breach of these agreements, this is a situation where the general fund of the district is not, you know, cannot be just rated, it can't be just, you know, you can't go into the general fund and just do what you want with it. You got to do what's authorized. And in this case, there were limits on how much spending from the general fund was authorized for this purpose. And the spending that was done exceeded the limits of what was authorized. So it is, in that sense, unauthorized, unauthorized use of the funds. And so that has to be taken into account. But I, to the extent that I understand the situation, when that happens, and by the way, I've done some research and I've talked to some people. This is not a common occurrence. This, this can happen in different contexts. It can happen like on a one-year basis, it can happen. And it can happen also through negligence and whatnot. But this is not a common thing. So you can't, you know, this is a serious problem. But in the end, it's not a cause for panic and hysteria or anything. It's a cause for determination to, and what it really, what, the way it was described to me was, it's about returning to the contract. In other words, we didn't do what the contract provided, but that doesn't mean you start pulling your hair out. It means you figure out how to get back to the contract. And, and I think we're going to be able to do that. And I think it's a good situation because, I think the way you, under your leadership, I think, I understand anyway, that this really is going to just become part of the ongoing relationship between the district and the union, and we're going to negotiate how to solve this problem. And it can turn out in the end to, you know, be a success if we come up with a solution and whatnot. And I think that when stuff like this happens, you really start to, you know, people talk about trust, and people talk about, you know, respect and whatnot, and how everybody should treat each other and whatnot. But this is when you really find out who your friends are. This is when you really find out, you know, how we're going to work together to solve a problem. And I think that everybody on this board is a friend of the union, and everybody on the board is a friend of you in terms of wanting to solve this problem. And I think everybody on this board is a friend to each other in that we're going to have to really pull together and sort this out. And, and, you know, what it represents when there's a deviation from the allocation from the general fund, what happens is it's generally considered in labor law terms, a unilateral change. And you can't change a mutually agreed, you know, arrangement through unilateral action. So unilateral action occurred here, and we got to get back to bilateral action. And I really believe we're going to do it, and it's a challenge. And I, but I also see it as an opportunity to show the unions that we're on their side and for them to show us that they're on our side, and we're all working together for the students and the parents and the teachers and the families. So I just want to commend you for your leadership. I, to come into this job new, to move your family here and get here, and you've worked so hard at establishing relationships with people all through the district. And for you to have this, you know, and for particularly the timing of it, coming, you know, all of a sudden, you know, I have questions about, who knew about this a year ago? But we don't need to get into those questions right now. The fact is, it came to you, and you've picked it up, and I just commend you for how you've handled it.
Thank you, Clerk Hills. Just on that point, I would just want to underscore that Laguna Beach Unified School District has a, has been, in spite of this issue, a fiscally well-managed district. You have a healthy cash reserve. The general fund can absorb this without impacting other programs or services or staff. So this is, this is something that we will need to work on, but it is absolutely an issue that we can manage.
Yeah, I'm just going to add, because of those comments, this isn't really about money. It's really not about the availability of money. It's about the authorized use of money. And, and, and so when there's an unauthorized use of money, you have to figure out how to solve that problem. And, but, in the process, you don't just repeat the mistake, you find a remedial approach to it. And, and I think that, I think that everybody in this room has really strong mutual interest in figuring out how to do that without any hesitation, because it's got to happen.
So I, I agree with you, Mr. Hill, that there isn't a reason to panic and that we should always have sound controls, so nobody disagrees with that. And I also think it was appropriate, Dr. Glass, in the context of approving the union contracts, to point out that we have to look into an issue that's come up. But I also think it was somewhat premature to bring this up because I don't think that we have sufficient information to be having a conversation that jumps to any conclusions whatsoever. I think at this point, we have very basic information. And what I'm hearing from this, as somebody who does understand how accounting works, I don't have any, there's no proof in this conversation about unauthorized uses of funds or anything, because we don't have that level of detail. So I would like to suggest that we proceed with approving the contract. You look into finding more information, and then we figure out where to go from there. Because I think we're jumping the gun a little bit, jumping to conclusions absent the kind of information that everybody needed. And I wish that this had not, in this level of detail, been a part of this conversation or meeting agenda without that information. So I think it's appropriate to move on to approving the contracts.
I agree, but I also suggest that we get in touch with our auditors. This is an issue that's, the auditors need to let us know as far as what's going on here.
I would, I would have to agree with Member Kelly. We have a current audit happening now, right? For, after the signatory cards? So is, would an audit have, well, I had more questions, so I'm sorry I didn't get back, or man. But, and I actually disagree respectfully with the not bringing it tonight because at the end of the day, this is a, it's a, and I agree, our general funds can carry it. But I think that that's, we shouldn't be so casual when we talk about a million, over a million dollars out of unauthorized spending when we have, in the last seven months, we've had a $25 million pool, a $25 million solar project, I think it was 25, right? And then there's also talking about a, taking a loan, taking a loan for that solar, but then also possibly preparing for a bond to help fund everything else that we can't pay for because we're going to pay for the pool. So while it, while we concurrently today manage this, we ran on, I know I am very passionate about transparency and accountability. And I know the people that have been in this room for the many months, claiming that there's not transparency, the actual act of this happening is what's not transparent. And I struggle to believe that no one knew about it other than the one person that was responsible for funding it. Because that same person now was just welcomed into the fuel community at their summer evening on July 13th. So there's just a lot of coincidental actions that I think is important to bring up so that the public is aware of what's happening, so that when we do approve a contract, or don't approve a contract, I don't know what everybody's going to do, but that, that there's transparency on what we're looking at going forward. I appreciate the suggestion that it comes back on the October 14th, or the August 14th agenda, rather than just kind of push it down the road like it's not a big deal. The scrutiny that has occurred over the last seven months, from fishing through personal emails, demanding personal emails, thinking, being accused of hiding things, this to me is very much about why I am sitting here. Because I promised people that I would try and figure and figure out where is our money going? We have so much money. Where is it going and what is it doing and what is it doing for our community, not just our staff? Our staff funding is 71, 79% of our budget. So this is this impacts a whole lot of things. I'm curious as to how it's going to impact the LCAP because that's part of a funding formula. There's, you know, how will this impact? You know, what's the resolution? I'm not trying to negotiate it now at all, but I'm saying that we owe the taxpayers of this community a conversation on the 14th that identifies the problem, how it occurred, who's involved, how we can what some propositions are to fix it. And so to just say that we should approve the contracts for 79% of our budget without making an awareness that there's an that there's an $800,000 unapproved spend for it to make sure that it's all in compliance, we need to make sure that that's that's transparent.
Point I'm making, the point I'm making is that if you're going to talk about a million dollar problem, you don't treat that casually. We know all the information that we need to know to have a public discussion so that board members don't jump to conclusions that may not be accurate. I don't think it's fair to the discussion or to transparency. And while I appreciate that Dr. Glass brought this up so that the union and the people approving the contract understand that we're investigating an issue, it was premature to have this discussion absent all the information that we need. Because I don't have any information that would lead me to jump to the same conclusions that other people on this board have jumped to.
If I may, the when I spoke earlier about we will deal with issues where there is no clear right or wrong thing to do, this is the timing on this is one of those issues. And frankly, it's something that I struggled with over the past several days. There are compelling reasons to bring it forward tonight. There were compelling reasons not to. Ultimately, that decision was guided after conversation with your counsel. So that is why we're here raising it tonight. Further, as I stated earlier, I don't have all the information on this, and I apologize that I don't know more, but that's the truth about where it is right now. And at this point, I don't have any evidence to point to anybody about anything. And so I do think it's it's important that we are cautious and thoughtful right now. And you have you, Madam Chair, you have a recommendation from me on how you should proceed that has been vetted by your counsel, and that's what I recommend.
Is this Howard? Can it be short, please?
Yeah, of course. The I think that, you know, I'm expecting, I guess I can, there's no reason why I can't announce what I how I intend to vote. I intend to vote to approve this contract. But a serious discussion and serious thought and serious consideration of all the options and alternatives is, I think, the responsibility of everybody on the board. In other words, it's not just, oh, you know, we don't have enough information yet, we shouldn't go public, we should just vote for it, you know, we support the unions or whatever, you know, whatever it is, or we want this district to do this. It's really easy to say that. What's hard is to tell the truth. And in terms of who's friends with who, there's an old saying that the harder the truth, the truer the friend that tells it. And the person that says, oh, yeah, we're just going to vote for this because, you know, and we're not going to draw any conclusions and everything, we know enough to know that somebody knew about this for a long time and somebody was not transparent. And so, yeah, each of us, the superintendent, you know, I haven't heard anybody say anything other than we got to do what's right by the employees, we got to do what's right by the taxpayers. And again, I'm going to repeat myself, this is an opportunity as much as it's a problem. And we're going to get there. But the fact is that we know enough. And I just want to re I want to associate myself with the remarks of Mayor Morgan. I ran on the on the grounds that we were going to have transparency. And after 20 years of not being able to get information in a timely way, I sure as hell wasn't going to be part of withholding information that I believe the public needs to know. And you don't wait until you get all your Ts crossed and all your Is dotted before you tell the truth sometimes. And, you know, the situation is, is that the two senior officials of the district who are most responsible for this matter are both gone right now. They've left. And so we can't sit down and talk to them. And so we now got we now have to deconstruct and reconstruct what happened here, and we will. But the idea it could take a while to accomplish this. And the idea that we would sit on this information until we got more comfortable about it, if we if we have information that indicates that the explanation for how this happened and whatnot, or the or the ramifications of this are not as profound and pronounced as we tend to think they are based on what we do know, I'll be the first to say, hey, you know, this new information, you know, enables us to look at this a little bit differently. Nobody has said or drawn any conclusions about anything except for the fact that, as far as I'm concerned, that it's important to tell the public about this problem so that we can pull together and work together and solve it.
Madam Chair, just on those last few points, again, I would just want to underscore that an investigation has not been conducted. I don't have all the information. I cannot point to any person or individual that I know that was responsible for this. And it's I urge the members to be cautious in casting aspersions or blame at this point. We just don't know. And we will take the time and fully investigate this and through a financial forensic audit process and determine what happened. But this is not that time. I don't have that information for you. So I just urge that the members are cautious. Thank you.
I understand that, and I am grateful that you brought it forward and that we're not hiding things.
Do we vote on the item? Do we vote on the item?
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the 2025-2026 collective bargaining agreements as presented and further direct the superintendent and staff to, number one, engage with employee union leadership to address the district's current overspending on health care contributions for the 2025-26 school year, including discussion of a potential agreement to amend the existing contracts to reflect a mutually acceptable resolution. Number two, to collaborate with union leadership to develop a long term, sustainable strategy for managing employee health care benefits within the parameters of future collective bargaining agreements and the district's financial obligations. And number three, it is further moved that the superintendent is authorized to retain qualified independent auditors to implement specialized supplemental forensic financial audits determined after notice and consultation with the board president to be necessary and prudent in order to prevent and resolve fiscal budget and financial control deficiencies and to ensure district compliance with applicable contracts, obligations, and laws.
I'm where I'm sorry, where did that motion come from? Was that your motion?
Yes.
I I provided model language for part of that.
Okay.
So with that, are we approving the contract?
Yes.
We're approving the contracts. Well, no, we're taking a vote on the contracts. I I'm sorry.
So you have a motion has been made.
I have a motion that's been made. Is there a second?
Before I vote, can I just make sure I understand the motion that by approving these contracts, approving this motion tonight, we still have the option to go into negotiations to re possibly, if need be, reevaluate the contracts as well as put together a plan going forward. And we're also asking for a forensic audit to happen on our finances for do we need to define how long or? We have an overspend of a hun of over a million dollars plus, and we don't know if there's anything else. So it's probably really important to have an audit done because.
Mrs. Morgan, don't you need to understand the nature of the overage before you decide that you need a forensic audit? The forensic audit, like, I feel like we don't even have enough information. I'm not against doing a forensic audit. If there's a problem I can understand has actually happened, I don't understand the details of what I'm even being told here. I don't have numbers. I don't know how the decisions were made about the contract. I don't know that we have all the information we need to understand the extent of the problem. There's a possibility in my mind that the problem isn't what we're hearing that it is because we don't have enough information. So, I mean, I guess we could do the motion, and if we discover that this is not the kind of problem we thought it was because we don't have sufficient information, then we could rethink what we're asking to do. It may not be that we need a forensic auditor.
We we do know that we breached the agreement. I mean, the attorney determined that.
To repeat myself, if if it turns out that this is not as severe a problem as it appears, then we don't have to use any special audit. But given the situation, the facts are the facts are as they are that are known, the board counsel, I mean, what really my understanding is that the superintendent briefed each of the members and briefed the counsel. And the the recommendation from the superintendent and the counsel are that we that we go ahead and approve the agreements, but that we give ourselves that audit capacity, among other things, because this would indicate that there's, you know, been a protracted law period of time in which fiscal controls and compliance have resulted in the objective fact of around a million dollars of money that's been spent that isn't that's been taken out of the general fund that wasn't supposed to be taken out of the general fund. And so nobody is trying to blame anybody or accuse anybody or anything else. But we know enough, the idea that we don't know enough, and, you know, we all want to learn more, and and the superintendent is committed to finding out more. But based on what we do know, this is a serious situation that justifies the motion that was made. And I encourage that we move forward with the motion.
Thank you. May I be recognized, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Just in the interest of full transparency, I provided a motion to President Perry on this matter. It included the elements of approving the agreement, engaging with the union leadership to address the district's current overspending for the current year, and collaborating with union leadership on a long term, mutually agreeable solution. That was what I recommended and what counsel recommended. President Perry, you have added an additional element to that, which is entirely within your prerogative to do as the as a board member. You have a motion and a second on that.
If I could just make one point, I think it's important to say the contract is approved unconditionally. And so, you know, the 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 action item is the disposition of that is final and complete. And and we now go into the process of working together to solve this problem. So I I think it's actually a potential success story if we we get our act together and do it. And I think telling the community about it was the right thing to do.
Thank you. I'm sorry to belabor the point. I did also just want to add that I would consider it part of my professional responsibility to investigate what happened and bring you full information on it. So I I understand why it's why it is included in the motion that you've made, but please know that you've hired a superintendent. This is my job to find out what occurred and bring you that information.
Can we vote on the motion?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
A second?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Maybe I just didn't hear you. So are we going to do the same thing again for the next contract?
Sorry, the the other contract isn't up until this, and maybe you can help me with the timing. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Right me. Yeah.
I'll turn things over to Mr. Conlon to review that. Apologies, I'm.
So 11 C is the public disclosure of the collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AB 1200, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title V, Section 15449. Requires that the costs associated with the agreement be publicly disclosed and approved by the Board of Education. The 33 employees represented in this group are classified management, certificated administrators, school psychologists, classified, unrepresented, and confidential employees. These employees are not part of either La Buffalo or CSEA, and a 3% unscheduled salary increase is recommended for approval by the Board of Education. And the staff recommends that the Board of Education approve the 2526 compensation proposal for nonrepresented classified and certified staff.
Should we should I read that again? Do I need to read that again?
Don't we just have to make a motion to approve it?
Can we just make a motion to approve it? Okay. Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of service agreement with leadership associates to conduct an executive search for the position of assistant superintendent, business services, in an amount of $15,000. Mr. Conlon, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. So yes, this this agreement is made with leadership associates in the amount of $15,000. They are in the process of supporting and helping us to to find a replacement CBO with hopes of having someone in the position by potentially end of August, maybe early September. So your approval of this contract will or the ratification of the contract will allow us to continue with that process.
And I'll add, in the interim, I've been serving as the in the leadership role over the business services team. You have a very veteran and capable group of employees there that's been handling the financial and budget and fiscal operations and and all of the other operational aspects of the district. So it's in good hands with the team that you have, but I've been serving in that role just in this short term. I would ask for the board's support in this. I think this last conversation shows how critical it is that you have someone with expertise in these areas in that role. Boy, I wish I had somebody that was in this role right now to navigate through the issue that we just had dialogue about. But the reason that we're using leadership associates is really to accelerate the process and make sure that we get a top candidate in place quickly. And if there are any, I also just want to say in terms of, I understand that it is an additional cost, the $15,000 for this contract, but the board should also, I think, consider that I'm serving in that role now, which is probably a savings of over $40,000 over the course of these couple of months that the position is is open. Thank you.
And also, I think it would be good if you were just serving in your role as superintendent and not trying to serve a second role. So I agree that we it would be good to hire someone as soon as possible. Not that you're not doing a great job at that also, but it's two jobs for you.
Yeah.
Yes, me, yeah, yeah. Discussion?
I actually had a couple of quick questions. Has the search already started? Have you do you have a pool of candidates that you're looking at already?
They're currently having a pool and they're and they're evaluating and doing all the reference. They're currently having a pool and they're evaluating and doing all the reference checks for us. And then we're meeting with her, I believe, next week to schedule who's going to be on the panel interview and the final interview process. So they're already, again, the applicant pool has been, they're getting accepted and they're being screened at this time. And we're hopeful.
And is it all driving from the, or being drawn from the education field? Are we looking at business leads that are coming from the education industry? Or is it a broader, and can it be a broader search? I'm just curious. I know there's specific things to education, but I'm just curious if there's...
Yeah, they have certain certifications that they're required to have in the state of California. So someone coming from, say, just a business accounting wouldn't have all the...
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
And I think just to contribute to that, the position closes this Friday. Is that right?
I believe so.
This Friday. Yeah, so we haven't had a chance to review the applicants to this point, but we have been in contact with leadership associates. And they're pleased with the pool that they're getting. So that's encouraging.
Well, you definitely need help. And I am sorry for you that you don't have this person, your right-hand person. And it's an interesting timing. So I think you're doing a great job. And you've been extremely communicative. And it's a lot, I know. And I appreciate everything that you're doing. And expediting the process will help everyone, I'm sure.
Any other comments?
Probably not going to be very popular because I want to take a few moments to express a few things that I think are really important. First of all, I'm going to vote to approve this contract. And I think primarily because of how urgent it is that we fill this position. And, but I do want to make a couple of comments that sort of go back in some ways to our conversation about the SRO. You know, I've been following some of the hiring practices of the board here for about 25 years. And I'm aware of the fact that we've fallen into a pattern of not having women in senior positions of administrative authority in the district. And I saw it begin back when we had a male president of the board. And you had a bunch of parents come in, including several women who were civil engineers and scientists and in the STEM professions. And they came in and advised against a curriculum change. And the person who was the president of the board was pretty dismissive. And sort of said, well, you know, if we have to choose between a bunch of parents that have opinions about this and what our staff wants us to do, well, we're going to go with the staff. And that curriculum program turned out to be a disaster and had to be rescinded. And it hurt, it hurt students. It hurt, it hurt kids. And then the woman assistant superintendent, who had been assigned to advocate for that failed curriculum, she was essentially fired. And so, you know, so much for no good deed goes unpunished. But then you look forward from there. And all of a sudden, over a period of time, you have a situation where there's a pattern develops where all the women, senior women in the district, all just sort of disappear. And so then you say, well, you know, there are gender discrimination issues. You can't, you can't try to achieve gender, ethnic balance, or DEI goals, or whatever, if it's discriminatory. And I understand that. Believe me, I understand that. I was general counsel of an agency where I came in and there were 20 lawyers in a very prestigious agency. And when I left, there were 11 women lawyers because there were only 20 men lawyers when I got there. And I didn't do that by hiring women. I did that by hiring the most qualified candidate. And if it turned out to be a woman, it turned out to be a woman. But, so I'm not advocating gender discrimination here. I'm just observing that I find it to be kind of unnatural that there's been this pattern. I'm not advocating discrimination for women, but there's kind of a de facto situation where there were, there was a balanced situation. And, you know, I just think that it's something that leadership associates, you know, let's put it this way, I'm not an expert on this, but I'd like it to be mentioned to them that, you know, one of our objectives would be to have, would be to have balanced... Again, we want the most qualified candidate. But there should be awareness that there also, if there, if it turns out the most qualified candidate is a woman, I would really think that would be a step in the right direction. And I also wonder, I was very impressed with leadership associates in the superintendent search. And I think they did a really great job. I wasn't very happy about their participation in governance workshop where they acted as a consultant for a governance workshop. And I think that was not a good situation. Wasn't handled well, but we're not asking them to do that again. So we don't have to worry about that. But I also just want to comment that the reason this position is vacant is because Mr. Dixon moved on to greener pastors. And I wish him well. And I hope that he succeeds and has a great experience. I will say that, you know, I, my personal view was that having him leave his position as an assistant superintendent and go become an acting superintendent, at the time it occurred, I did not think, as somebody who's been involved in executive HR for 45 years, I didn't think it was a great move for him. No, I can, I'm sorry. Point of order, point of order. I'm finishing my comments. I don't need to be debated. And so, the fact of the matter is, the result of it was, I thought it would be awkward for him to go to that and then go back. And the point is that I don't know, I've heard, it's been said that, that he worked with leadership associates. And so, I don't know if that's true or not. But I think that if it is, that it might be good for there to be a disclosure of that so we understand the timing of it. But all of those concerns that I have expressed, on the strength of their performance in the superintendent search, which I really liked, I'm prepared to vote for this.
Okay, let's have a vote. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? No? Thank you. Let's move on to E, Approval of the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for the 2526 School Year. Mr. Conlon, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, President Perry. So the Declaration of Need is an annual document required by the state of California to be completed by school districts as a prerequisite if they anticipate the potential issuance of an emergency permit or limited assignment permit in areas where the district may anticipate having difficulty filling a vacancy with a highly qualified candidate. This year, we have several special education teachers taking leaves of absences. And we're doing everything in our power to find highly qualified candidates to fill these roles. But in a situation where a candidate may have a special education credential authorizing them to teach, say, early childhood education, which is birth to kindergarten, this declaration, if we find a viable candidate with that credential, this declaration will allow us to consider them for the K-2 self-contained class. That's just one example of how this works. We also have one teacher who has a single subject credential that was issued in another state and then moved to California. Her out-of-state credential does not meet California's requirements for an English learner authorization, but can be added after taking additional coursework or tests. We anticipate this individual will complete the requirements prior to the start of the school year. But in the event that that doesn't happen or the results cannot be verified prior to August 15th, we would have the employee apply for an emergency-clad English learner authorization permit. In order to receive this permit, the district needs to have a declaration of need in place. So that's the reason why we're bringing this forward.
Q, questions?
Thank you for clarifying that. I know I had a couple of questions about it because I wasn't quite sure why there would be a need. Is there, are we going to prioritize existing staff and give them the option if they want to be trained before we go out and try and recruit people?
Sure. Whenever there's an opening, if there's always a voluntary transfer opportunity for individuals to express their interests, then they're considered before we go outside.
And can they do that mid-season, mid-school year? Like, you said a couple of people are going on leave. So can they do the training in anticipation? I'm not trying to get really detailed on what that training is, but is that a possibility?
We actually had conversations with some of our current staff who hold a different authorization to say, to ask them if they were interested in shifting to the K-2 class for this upcoming year. They respectfully declined and wanted to stay in the position they're in. But yeah, that's definitely a possibility. But again, we've had those conversations. And now we're just looking to, if, and again, we do everything in our power to make sure we find a highly qualified individual that has the exact credential. But this just gives us the potential flexibility if we find someone that maybe has a different credential, but it still has the expertise to do the work.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the clarification.
Any discussion? Okay, let's, is there a motion then?
That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to item 12, the Consent Calendar Action. Mr. Hills, are there any speaker cards for those who wish to make public comments on the consent calendar? Okay. Do any board members have any questions on items that would not require pulling the item? Or, and does any board member wish to pull any items to be discussed and voted on separately?
I actually have a couple.
I would like to pull the item on the appointment of the superintendent as board secretary.
Okay, which letter is that? You? You, okay? You?
I actually have a couple of questions that might help me not pull a couple of them. Is, do we have, and this actually came up in public comment, and I actually...
Which items are you...
I'm referring to BB, CC...
DD?
BB, BB.
BB, okay.
CC.
CC.
And GG are the three items that were commented on from the public comments that came in. But I also had a question about that, and I thought it was a good question. Do we have a limit of how much a contract can be when we include it in consent as far as a spending limit? And what is that limit if we know it? And if not, that's fine. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just asking if we, if anybody has that information. Because it was asked by the public, and I thought it was a good question. Do we have a limit that we just push through consent? Because I know that this is the beginning of the year. But last year, we had, we only went to BB or DD. And this year, we're all the way to UU. So I'm just curious if we have any restrictions on how much we're pushing through on a consent calendar.
Madam Chair, just from a procedural standpoint, would you prefer to pull the items Christine Morgan has raised and work through those individually?
Let's, let's pull those items. And then I would like to pull item KK. So let's, let's do approval of the consent calendar. Items C through UU, except U, BB, CC, GG, and KK.
Hang on, I had a couple more to pull. I was just asking that question. That's okay. The, did you pull KK?
I pulled KK.
Okay. And then I want to pull QQ and RR.
RR?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And EE.
EE. Okay. Okay, so what I have here, I hope I'm correct, that we're pulling seven items, U, BB, CC, GG, KK, RR, EE.
It was UU.
UU.
UU. Oh, two U's. Okay.
What's your list again?
UU, BB, CC, GG, KK, RR, EE.
Madam Chair, your very capable exec here has got them.
So the first motion will be all items under consent except for BB, CC, GG, EE, QQ, RR, KK, and UU. And I'll put those in correct order.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Shall we start with BB?
Aye. So I asked to have this pulled for the reason that I, the question that I asked, which is, which will take three of these off right away. Is there a limit to how much we can put in the consent calendar? Or do we have any guidelines on that or policies?
There is no limit to how many items you can put in the consent calendar or agenda. The consent agenda, we start with a recommendation of items for the board that we feel are routine in nature and unlikely to generate any controversy or anything else than a 5-0 vote. What you have here, because of the time of year, you have a new fiscal year. So you have a bunch of new contracts that the district is renewing. You also have a new superintendent coming in. So you've got to do some changes to assignments and banking and authority around that. And then an item that Clerk Hill has brought forward around assigning me as secretary. So that accounts for why, why there's a number of items on the consent agenda that we've recommended. With that said, it's the board's decision of how you want to structure your agenda. So we started with that list. Clerk Hills was the acting president. He moved forward with those recommendations of the items that we put forward on the agenda. When President Perry got back, she also affirmed that that was the structure that she wanted. When you come to your board agenda and approving the board agenda, you have the opportunity to remove items then. And in California, when you come to this point, any of the items can be removed by any board member. So what you have, in short, is what we thought were non-controversial or routine items, that's typically what goes on the consent agenda. The reason for that is we're trying to preserve your time to focus on things that are really substantive and which you got into tonight. So it's just to be more efficient with your time. But we defer to the board and the board president on how you construct your agenda. It's your agenda.
If I may, sorry.
There was...
My question was about the value, the value amount, not necessarily the number of items. Do we have any policy?
Right. We used to, if an item was a whole lot of money, it wouldn't go to the consent calendar. Do you remember that? Do you remember that, Dr. Kelly?
Thank you. May I answer, based on what you... So each president has set an amount, a basic amount in the past. Large items generally are not placed on the consent calendar unless they've been brought forward before. So new items do not go on consent. We put them in information and then action or action depending on what the item is. But if they've been on before and you've approved them prior, they have often gone on consent.
Well, we're learning that maybe we don't need, we need to do things new rather than how we've always done it. I know that's a term in business that if you, if we say this is how we've always done it, then that probably is a problem. So I appreciate that response.
Every card was a cost.
I disagree with that, based on the fact that we're going to have a forensic audit. But I appreciate your opinion.
Well, we may not need that.
Thank you. That clears up BB, CC, and GG for me. I hope that it solves, I hope that we've addressed the items for the community member that wrote in when he questioned those, or they questioned those, whoever it was.
So you got, just in terms of order, which item were we on? What, which one?
12, consent.
BB, CC, and GG.
CC and GG.
Now, properly...
It's fine moving them together. Anybody else?
Well, procedurally, I think properly, because they've all three been pulled now. You need to vote on them as individual items.
I need to approve BB.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Second.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's BB first. And I'm sorry to...
We have a motion.
Stickler on process.
Okay.
Perfect.
How many approve of item BB?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. How many approve of item C? How many approve of item CC? Who would like to approve? Okay, um. Okay. All in favor of item GG?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, what do we have to, option here?
Uh, KK, uh, um, I pulled KK, uh, mostly for more information that, um, maybe, uh, I'm sure Dr. Mayberry has for us. Please explain how money must be spent in addition to what was allocated previously and add new opportunities for students with Prop 28.
Yeah, so for Prop 28, uh, there's multiple conditions to it. One is that it has to, it cannot supplant something we're already doing, so it's in addition, right? So-
Right.
Um, so in this case, we get a little bit under, uh, again, this is, this item is report based off of what was spent last year. Uh, it's a state report, but the specifics of it, um, that are not in the report, um, is that the funds were used to provide additional, um, a new part-time, um, theater support at the elementary level, uh, which is our high school teacher who's now, um, her English, her English, uh, classes were replaced by a new teacher, so we took part of her role and put it down there. Uh, we've added a-
So she's working at the elementary schools now?
As well, both high school and-
She goes back and forth. Okay, thank you.
Her English, she was teaching English and theater. Someone else took over her English classes, so. Uh, a new, a, a second, uh, vocal teacher that is, uh, we hired a, two years ago, we hired another second, our first certificated vocal teacher, uh, while, while also expanding our full elementary parent educator, uh, that, that supports vocal music. So we added additional hours to that, that's in here. Um, and then we also hired a second vocal music teacher, um, this past year with these funds. So we now have two certificated vocal teachers and now a full-time parent educator if that supports vocal music. It was not a full-time person, uh, we added additional hour into their work, work day. Um, those are all an additional that were used in Prop 28 funds.
My, my question about those is, I mean, previously the students had vocal music at the elementary level. They had Best Sands, and at the upper level they had Roxanna. So it's, is it adding a different experience for students, um, because they had it before?
Yes. So Roxanna was not, was I think, believe a, believe was a professional expert, uh, was not certificated.
Neither of them were certificated, but the students were, were still having-
So the certificated, so adding the two certificated teachers, one allows them to subject both middle and high school theater programs on a full-time basis, which they would not be able to do previously. So we've added additional time as well as, one of the things we found when the previous, uh, elementary vocal parent educator retired, was that she was doing the work of multiple people, right? And so she was not able to, see, her class sizes were bigger, she was, there was a lot of things that she was not able to do. Now we're able to have, with a extra hours to that parent educator as well as certificated support. Those certificated teachers now can also support all the different classroom activities that happen at the elementary level. Might be, uh, a play that they're doing, it might be, um, a performance that, uh, the previous person was not able to do because they had so many, they were not able to do, they had to do a lot of it on their own. So they're increasing the programming a little bit at the elementary level as well as, um, as well as pushing into those classes. And then at the middle and high school level, prior, a person was kind of trying to bounce between the two. Both those pro, theater programs have, happened later in the day. Um, so a per, one person couldn't be at both. So hiring the second person allowed us to be able to split their time between the middle and the high school as well as provide additional support at the elementary, uh, for the, for that programming. And then they're looking to, at the same time, there's, they've both started, um, uh, new clubs during tutorial and outside the day so that they can eventually expand the vocal program, not, so it's not just living in musical theater. But that takes obviously time to build up interest, uh, but they started doing that this year as well.
Okay, thank you. That sounds great. I want, just wanted to make sure that since we were already spending money, that we subtracted that money, didn't just add the others. So for, you know, just, I, I don't know, say, these two cost $50,000 and we're paying, uh, $150,000 now. We need to subtract 50,000 because we were already paying 50,000. Are you following me?
Maybe. Is there a question?
Well, well, what I'm, uh, we, we already had people hired and now we have credential people-
Yes, not as many.
That are, you know, are money, but I just want to make sure that, so these are new people and we can use that for Prop 28 funds. But we also need to subtract out money that we were using before.
Correct.
We can't-
So like, so for example, you're right. So for example, the parent educator position previously was 30-
33 hours.
33 hours a week, right? And so in order to expand those services, we now have made that 30, 40 hours a week? 40 hours a week, right? We're not, we're not expensing all 40 hours. We're expensing the additional seven hours per week.
Okay.
So that's a one example of how that works.
Okay. I just, yeah, I just didn't know if we were adding these people and just adding that. And then I, um, I also had questions about, um, I guess you're reaching out to different groups in town to provide art for each elementary grade level. Um, what are the costs and what are the groups?
And that, that's in this item?
Well, it's how we're spending Prop 28 money.
Correct. But, and this, so in regards to the funding for this, there's no reference to visual arts. It's referenced to middle school teachers spending additional hours to, for performing arts. We already have Vapitosas that do that role that are not funded through this. They're funded through general fund.
Right, but we're talking about how we're spending all the Prop 28 money.
Correct.
Right? Um, so for the middle school, it says we're spending $30,000 to coordinate performing arts programs? So how, how is that different than? Explain to me how that's working.
So they, again, so this, for Prop 28, um, the principals and school site determine how those are funded. And so obviously we support and help with compliance and accountability. And one of their interests was having, looking at their performing arts programming and saying, how do we help, how do we figure out how to help students transition to the middle school in a way where their skills are matching and they're getting the right support? And they're getting enough, uh, extras, professional experts to help? And then are we getting them ready for the high school program, right? And so you think of the middle school level, they have instrumental music, chorus, jazz, and theater. Um, and we're trying to expand into vocal music, so that's already at the elementary level. So those three people got additional hours. Uh, there's three people at the middle school got additional hours, uh, or a stipend. Two, start to work more with the vertical part of those programs as well as look at how they can connect to local, local groups. Um, things like Foursquare Performance or Festival of Arts or things like that where are we all, is there middle school, is elementary doing something that middle school should do? Is the high school doing something middle school should do? And like really help spending more time helping aligning those programs as well as connecting them to the community.
So it's giving students new experiences or it's more-
Some of it is, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I don't know if you've noticed, but some of the updates, I don't put them all, I don't put them all in the updates, but one of the things you'll notice that we've done a lot more of this last year is the pro, specifically the high school programs. Uh, one of the needs that was identified was how do we help the, the programs where we want kids to end up? You know, the, the ones that are really passionate about it? How do we connect them more to the middle school and then the middle school to the high, to elementary? And so one of the things we've done more of is through these funds, supporting field trips and buses to bring the dance program down to the middle school or down to the elementary. Or bring the, the jazz from the high school down to the middle school to do some things with them. So they're trying to connect those programs, so that's, uh, used with field trip dollars for Prop 28. And then those people are coordinating some of those activities.
Okay, and then how does the high school-
Can Prop 28 dollars be used for field trips and things like that? I thought with staffing, like an 80% and 20%?
It is 80 and 20.
So 80% for staffing and 20% for materials?
Uh-huh. And the high school staff, um, we're, we're spending $40,000 to supervise a makers lab. Isn't that kind of in Mr. Whitfield's area? The cost area, I mean, it's getting late. And it is, this is different though. We're, we're spending-
Well, this is beyond, this is beyond their school day, so make this, what they've developed and Mr. Whit, Mr. Whit, I can speak to it.
Did you do that last year too?
This was the first year that-
This was the first, the first year that we did it was this year, um, where we were open, um, two days a week.
You did it last, but this year, you did it last.
24, 25.
Was the first year. We've done it one total year.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Yeah.
Um.
That's what these, and that's what these dollars are for. They're, this is like an end of year report on like what was impacted with the Prop 28.
And then, um, it talked about materials being bought, but I know we also, in the consent calendar, are doing that cool new and graver thing. And, uh, so there's other things you're buying too.
Yes.
Well, then the new fiber laser that we were talking about was GG, that, that's not through Prop 28. That is actually, um, Kelly Shear that had just retired, um, had wrote a specific grant that had came up for engineering. Uh, and she wrote the grant. That's where we got the money for the fiber laser.
That was the key, 12 strong.
Okay.
Yeah, round seven.
Okay.
No, but that's-
Thank you.
Sure.
The more detailed, would it be helpful to have a more detailed report that is, while I appreciate what's here, um, I think, you know, we are bound to, we are required to make sure we spend this money in that 80/20. So I think there's some, a little concern that we're not quite fulfilling that.
Can you share more about that concern? Because I just wanted to clarify-
Because 20% has to be materials. And 80% can be staffing, but it has to be new staffing or new and, and/or new experiences. Is that right, Dee?
The-
Right. The, the whole point of it is to give students more experiences and it, it can be certificated or classified staff. But, um, to give students more experiences and concern that, you know, is that happening? Are we doing that? And it looks like in a lot of ways, we are.
So the, if I was, I'm happy to rewrite this in a, a different form. I will be upfront, there's not a lot more detail to provide, like, these are obviously rounded numbers, but in the background, the backup for, the background for this, I specifically, we're, did we specifically put in there like 65,000 was spent for this person's position? That includes benefits, right? It might not be 65,000, it might be 64,000, the $102, right? Um, 110,000 is for part of the vocal teacher and benefits, 15,000. So like, those are, those are that 80% as you go through the staffing piece. The main supplies in there are going to be, the makers lab had a, a good chunk of money this first year around getting more supplies because they are now producing a lot more things after school for kids. Um, and then, um, the other sites had some different field trips and stuff in there that kind of fall within that 20%. Uh, I don't think it would look drastically different to this, but I'm happy to go and get that report and so you can see that.
And I would also be interested in, in seeing even though it's not part of, I guess you, you're saying it's not part of Prop 28, the different grade levels that you've assigned different, you know, groups to. And, and the percentage of Prop 28 money that's being spent for elementary versus middle versus high, high school.
Yeah, that's, we've, I can reshare that with you. We've shared that in update. We get about, we get just under $300,000 a year. It's based off of the number of students in a school. Uh, it's going down each year a little bit, not just because of, uh, declining enrollment, but also because of the, the state tax dollars or less. And it's based off of the state budget. Um, and then the principals decide how that's spent. Um, the, the 100%, and, and there's obviously some obligations to that. Uh, around 80, you have to spend at least 80% on staffing. You could spend 100% on staffing if you wanted, but you have to spend at least 80% on staffing. Um, and then this report is, that you're approving tonight is not related to the all, I mean, that, that we have to, this is about like how many schools were impacted, how many additional staff were hired, which is on the attachment. How many students did they work with and impact, which is in the attachment? Um, so, but I'm happy to, to reshare that with you. I don't know, a weekly update next, tomorrow, next week.
Another question as well. You said, um, the 40,000 goes to the Makerspace Lab. I need a refresher on how that one works because I don't think any of my kids ever did that. Um, but also if Makerspace Lab existed, which I think it did last year, if we're spending money on supplies for Makerspace, then does that not, that doesn't qualify it, does it? Because it has to still be new, doesn't it? A new program, a new, I mean, you're very familiar with this, so.
It would qualify, just like improving the instruments.
Okay.
There's a lot, there's a variety of things. Coding is written in there or something. If you want to spend money on coding. There's a whole list of things that we have to follow regarding how money is spent for this proposition that was in, in the law when it was passed and vote by the voters in 2022.
Also-
80/20, not 100%.
Yeah, also when we talk about the finances for, um, the Makers Lab when we buy supplies, that is only for use during Makerspace hours and stuff. That doesn't go into my typical, uh, daily classrooms. It is separated into, um, the, what we call Makers Lab, which is the after-school program. So it is defined as two different ones. Uh, we also run some tutorials where we do Makers Lab during tutorials to, to try to get more kids involved.
So is Makers Lab like a term for an open lab? I mean, I'm, again, I've been all around it for years, but I still am a little confused.
Yeah, so there, there's Maker Labs like literally all over the country. They're like gyms. You can go and they have all the equipment and you pay $250 a month and you get to go in and use the equipment. So it's a very generic term. Um, we just call our, we call our thing a, a bunch of different things, but Maker Lab is a very simple, generic term. It's just the entire lab. Um, but then we use that as the name for the after-school program as well.
Thank you. I was like, I know I've heard it. I know my kids are around it, but I couldn't, so that, thank you.
Okay, um, can I have a motion for item KK? All in favor of item KK?
Aye.
Aye, thank you Dee for all your knowledge on that.
Um, item, yeah.
Before we move forward, I need to make a correction to, um, your, the very first motion. And I need to do a roll call vote on that because it included resolutions. So can I get a roll call vote for the very first motion to approve, uh, items C through UU minus BB, CC, EE, GG, blah, 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 blah?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I got five yeses verbally. Thank you.
In California, when it comes to a resolution, you have to do that.
You have to do-
Great, you caught that.
Okay, thank you for catching that. Um, uh, uh, so are we going to do you, you?
Oh, yeah, that was, I asked about that. So that's- Inter- Services, and I just wanted to ask if this is something that we are required to have? Or is it some, is it an opportunity that we could extend to our staff for, that's, that are bilingual? If that's, if, if that's in their skill set or is that a possibility? Again, just more opportunities for staff rather than bringing consultants or contracted employees? If we have bilingual staff members, if that's something of interest to them, is that something that we could extend to them instead?
I'm not sure, and someone else here may know more about if it's required or not. I will speak to the second part of your question around, um, uh, can staff do it? Some of our staff might be able to do it, uh, but when it comes to translation, often the, in, in a district like Laguna Beach that has a number of different languages and nationalities, you often run into some rare and obscure languages that you need to translate for. And, uh, I would say is, I, I would recommend that it's, it is the right thing to do to hire a professional translator who does this all the time. Uh, because not everybody, uh, even though they may be bilingual, um, you know, I, I grew up in Kentucky. English is a second language to me. Uh, it's like, you need somebody, yes, you need somebody that, it's a joke, sorry. Uh, you, you really need somebody that, uh, that spends, um, a lot of time thinking about how to make that translation understandable. It's, it's a respectful thing to do for your family, so I, I recommend it.
Opportunity for staff for, for, you know, additional opportunity, income, skill set, res, you know?
Possibly, but again, it's, you would want someone that is, and has expertise in the translation. You, and I, I've, uh, from experience working in districts with a lot of different nationalities and languages, parents get really offended and students do too if you translate something. Like I've seen districts use Google Translate and people get really hurt that-
Oh, no, I'm not saying to use that.
And, and I know you're not suggesting that, but, but, uh, it, uh, it's, it's not a material amount of money. It's up to $25,000, so we won't use the whole thing. It's, yeah.
Okay.
All in favor of approving E? Aye. UU?
Nope, QQ.
Yep, UU.
Okay, I, these are quick questions. This is a calendar item for Lincoln's, Lincoln Day to observe Lin, is that Lincoln's, was it, it's not called Lincoln Day, it's called-
Here, I can help clarify. So, so, no, as in, President Abraham, Abraham Lincoln, he has his own, his, his own holiday, which is the week before President's Day.
Yeah.
So what, the, the Lincoln Resolution, it's, it's a federal requirement. If a school district chooses to celebrate Lincoln's birthday on a different day than when, than when it's normally housed, and in this case, it, it's the week before. So the historical practice when they built the mid-winter break, they would make a resolution to shift it to be during the week of mid-winter break. And then what they also do is Admissions Day, which normally is in September, you're allowed to shift that as well. So it's been historical practice at admission, so the Monday is, it's California admissions, admission to the, to, to the United States.
I have never heard this, okay.
It's a great, it's a great lesson for you today. So, so the Monday is basically George Washington's birthday.
Right.
The Tuesday becomes Admissions Day and the Wednesday is, is Lincoln's, Lincoln's Day. So tho, those are put together to make three holidays over, to build out the mid-winter break as opposed to having like two, three-day weekends in a row.
So that was actually where I was leading with my question is because this is being requested to be observed during Ski Week or during our mid-winter break, how does that, is that a staff day off? Is it a paid day? Is it a double pay, can you pay?
Yeah, no, it's not, it's, it's not double pay. So basically, it's the CSEA contract, if you go under holidays, Article 15, it lists all of the holidays that are observed as paid days off for classified staff. So they're all listed there. This is just how we configure it into the week to, to build out mid-winter break. So if you're a classified employee, you have three days of holidays, so you're getting paid to stay home, not additional pay, not anything, you know, not time and a half, and no one works those days.
Right.
And then the Thursday and Friday, they take either a vacation or an unpaid day. Because if you look at the, the CSEA calendars in, in the back of the, the contract,
Yep, got it.
you'll see these VU days.
VU.
So like, it's called vacation or un, or unpaid.
It's official holiday.
So just, later on, if you take a look at the CSEA calendar, you, you'll, you'll see that. So when, to build out their, like I said, there's about seventeen holidays throughout the calendar year.
So this helps staff take that week off and not have to do another vacation day? Or, because sometimes if there's like two days, like in a business, right? You have two days before Fourth of July and if you want to take another day or not included, so you have to take, or a gap between Christmas and New Year's, you usually have to take a couple of paid days off to fill that gap. And so this helps staff maintain more of their personal days
Yes.
while we exercise their, their holidays as well and it falls in that.
Well, it's just classified staff, so they, they, they get a week off and it only costs them two vacation days because they, three of their seventeen holidays are, are land that week.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you, okay. It's a roll call vote, it's a resolution, Jim, slow down.
Member Kelly? Member Malchesky?
Yes.
Member Morgan? Clerk Hills? President Perry?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, item UU.
It just needs, it's a resolution, so-
Yeah, it's the same question. Yeah, I do a resolution roll call vote.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malchesky?
Yes.
Member Morgan?
Yes.
Clerk Hills? President Perry?
Yes.
Thank you.
UU?
Well, in the interest of the time, I'd just like to ask the audience to withhold its applause. And just wanted to mention with regard to this item. One of the things that came up during the discussion about this particular matter was whether or not the board needed to act to do this because the idea that the superintendent has duties that include serving as Secretary of the Board is a recital in the, in the contract. And California School Board Association's standard contract form, and the, and, you know, this is something that we heard over the years. Sometimes when issues would come up about how the bylaws are being applied or how the statute is being applied, we'd say, well, we would hear from the, from the school district that, well, that's in the, that's in the superintendent's contract. And so with respect to this subject of appointment of the superintendent at, as the, as the Secretary of the Board, there's things that I would just like to state for the record that I think need to be clarified. And it, basically what I would like to have on the record is that contract recital of duties is not an appointment authorizing the duties under Bylaw 9122. The contract defines contractual relationship of employer and employee subject to law, but contract is not a source of legal authority and may not, may may not deviate from legally binding bylaws or state law. So if there's ever a conflict between the contract and the bylaw, the contract loses. And, and we had in the past a situation where, when we raised issues about bylaws, we were told, we, you, we won't discuss that with you because it's in the contract and we couldn't get copies of the contract. So it was kind of frustrating. The duties of the superintendent as Secretary of the Board are more narrow than the, the broad general duties and powers of the superintendent. And so that's something that also needs to be understood. And, and the duties that are delegated by Bylaw 9122 for the Secretary of the Board are those prescribed in Education Code Section 35025, 35143, 35250 and Government Code Section 54950. Now, I'm just not a crazy person that I, I'm reading those things off because particularly, well, maybe I am a crazy person, but the, the, the last one, the Government Code Citation is really important and I want to read it into the record because it's important. In enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, boards and councils and other public agencies in the state exist to aid in the conduct of people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. And in addition to being apropos of some of the discussion tonight, that is the law of the state of California and that supersedes anything that is any employee's contract. And by saying this, I'm not in any way trying to emphasize that the superintendent, I want the superintendent to have all of the authority and power and, and, and strength of the superintendent and I'm not trying to suggest anything to the contrary. In fact, I think when you actually understand this scheme, it's, it makes for a stronger board and a stronger superintendent. And so this may all sound like, you know, theoretical, but having lived with a situation for many years where we were told that the bylaws didn't matter because something was in the contract, I think it was important enough to myself and to other people to just have this action taken by the board and not let this fall by the wayside. And, and, and it means a lot to me. And furthermore, I think it's required by Section 9122 for the board to actually make the appointment and not just say, well, it's in the contract, so we don't have to make it.
So Howard, just to clarify, essentially, you're just setting up a consent agenda item to clarify that Dr. Glass is going to do the job that he was asked to do in his contract? Is that what the outcome of this is?
That's actually not the case. The contract doesn't fulfill the requirement that the board act to appoint him. We do this every year.
Just because it's how we used to do it, doesn't mean it's right and how we should continue. I've already said that once.
Yeah.
It hasn't always-
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, Howard, I appreciate what you said about not yielding power, the people aren't yielding their power. I think that's really important that we all remember.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Our next regular meeting will be held on August 14th, 2025. And board members, if you have something you would like on the agenda, please let me know. All in favor?
Aye.